I mean for your, your adapter?
Yeah.
I couldn't make the room as sort of back to burn. I think that would be through fire. Mondays were so hard at night, you know. But they're still going. Still moving.
Yeah, happening every day.
No. I don't, I don't know. There's something just a bit deeper.
Steve, how are you? Good to see you. Again, if you want, I don't know if we need it, but. I don't, I don't think we need.
He didn't want any of us to know, apparently.
Hey, Ty. Are we just expecting Tony tonight, or do you think you'll have more? Okay, totally fine. So should we just start then? To- Tony is enough, you're right. Tony's the man. Don't need anybody else if Tony's here. I think any decision's gonna cost you a lot of work. Okay. Well, let's, let's get started then. Um, thank you for taking the time to come and for, um, folks from Robinson, we appreciate you coming up too. So thank you. Um, we will go ahead and get started then. This is a work session, combined work session with the Morgan City Council to discuss trash and recycling program. Uh, we did have a work session previously to, to discuss this and now we have some numbers that we can put to this and, and kind of come to a little more formal agreement, I hope. Um, I guess just to remind everybody kind of where we're at with this. Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District, which Morgan County and Morgan City are a part of. Um, Tony represents the city on that board and I represent the county on that board. That board has enacted an ordinance that, that will require the member entities to, um, implement some type of recycling program. We've talked about a couple of options here and, and that's kind of where we're at. So, um, I guess we'll go to that point. Do we want to talk about the, the different options? I think everybody's had a chance to look at the dollar amounts here, but maybe not a whole lot and we can talk through that. Um, so, right now we have a, a cost for hauling our trash, which is obviously through Robinson and we appreciate their partnership. They've been our partners for a lot of years and we appreciate that, so thank you. Um, and, and I feel like Robinson has done the best they can to, to keep those costs to a minimum, so we appreciate that.
I don't know, it's most tipping.
Wrong kind of tipping. That's for them to dump their truck. Um, so that, that's actually the fee, um, that's, that's paid to Wasatch Integrated. So they, they charge a hauling fee, or excuse me, a disposal fee. It's listed as a tipping fee here. It's actually, they call it a household use fee. So they don't, they don't charge a per. You pay a tipping fee for your commercial stuff, but on the residential side, we actually pay a, a household fee rather than a tipping fee.
So it's not for tipping?
No, um, this is, this is actually per household. It shouldn't even be listed as tipping, but anyway. Right, Tony?
There is, you can use the little one there too.
So, wh- wh- what is your county fee now, nineteen or?
Yeah, nineteen per month.
Okay, so that's seven dollars and twenty cents is already embedded in that, right?
It is, yeah. So right now our trash fees include the hauling.
And the tipping fee.
That goes, and the, and the household use fee.
Or the tipping fee, yeah.
Um, and we include a little bit for the cost of cans and for the cost of, of managing the program. So we have billing costs, we have the costs of, of going out and replacing cans and all that sort of stuff. So and I assume the city does the same thing with their costs. You include a portion for, for administrative costs, right, Ty? And you're at the same nineteen dollars, right?
Correct. So I'm, I'm just trying to digest this sheet right here a little bit. So I guess my question is, and so what I'm looking at here is in addition to what we are paying now, the nineteen, if we go with the recycling, that's going to cost us, depending on whether a bundle or opt-out, an additional three dollars and fifty cents or five dollars for the hauling cost. And then we have to pay an additional seven dollars and twenty cents? For a second tipping on the recycling?
No.
I'm confused.
That's what it looks like on here.
I am confused. That's what it looks like to me too.
It shouldn't be that.
Well, the city manager made that document, so it's subject to human error.
What's that? So Wasatch Integrated is not going to charge us a household use fee for recycling disposal?
That, okay, that's what I was under the assumption of.
They're not charging us anything to dump the recycling.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So there's not a tipping fee and there's not a household use fee.
So that's what had me confused with this a little bit.
Yeah. And the reason that they're not charging us that fee is because the intent of the recycling program is to divert from the landfill.
Okay, so, and I apologize for taking up all, you know, commenting so much here.
No, you're fine.
So help me out here, Ty and, and Steve, whoever. So we're suggesting that we, if, if, forget recycling. Okay, just forget this ever happened. We're talking about raising ours to twenty dollars, okay? But what we're saying here then is that if we went with recycling, the, the, the only additional, the additional costs would be that additional hauling cost, that either that three dollars and fifty cents or five dollars, correct? That would be directly related to the recycling.
Yep, and the can for the recycling.
And the can co- the can payback. Is, i- is that correct? So, so that fifty-five, fifty-five percent on the sheet, that represents five dollars. O- okay, I see what you're saying. Yours, okay, I, I, okay, I see. That actually could come down if we had better than fifty-five percent participation. That total per month then down on the bottom. Five and then the thirty-four sixteen. This is where I'm, I can pull seven dollars and twenty cents off of that. Okay, I can't, I'm just looking at your sheet. Yeah, cause honestly, the thirty-two forty-five or the thirty-four sixteen, up from twenty dollars a month sort of takes my breath away.
Yeah, but it won't be that, cause it'll be seven dollars less than that.
Okay. Okay, I, okay. And that's a little more palatable to me, but, yeah. Okay, I, I just, I just granted this, so.
Oh, it should be twenty-five, twenty-five. Yeah. Under the bundled service, you're talking twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
And under the opt-out, you'd be seven up. What's that, twenty-six something, twenty? Yeah.
Twenty-six, ninety-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I, I think you may have a thirty-four dollars a month.
And then one other thing that, um, oh, and maybe you did figure this in, Ty. The can payback, because we get a, a better stipend on the can. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, a little bit better stipend on the can, right. Okay, sorry about that, I was just very confused.
So, so for ease of looking at this, you're talking for a bundled service program, probably about twenty-five dollars and for an opt-out program, about twenty-seven dollars.
So when we say opt-out program, is that no per, nobody participating or fifty-five percent?
Fifty-five percent participating.
It's like thirty percent.
And, and the way that Wasatch Integrated has required that we do it, if we do an opt-out, we give an opt-out period typically for like six months. So everybody gets a can. They'd have six months to call and say, I don't want this can. And then any new move-ins or any changes after that six-month period, there is no opt-out. You, you are required to have a recycling can.
So for those that opt-out, what will their new fee be?
Well, if they opted out, then I guess they'd be at twenty, right? Cause we would exclude the cost of that, potentially. But I, I think we should handle it a little differently. I actually think we should inflate the garbage just a little bit more than that. Say we're gonna increase, if we do an opt-out program, I think the trash ought to be maybe a twenty-two dollar charge and then maybe three or four dollars for, for recycling. For a couple of reasons. Number one, our trash costs are going to continue to go up. And the more people do not recycle, the more those costs, or the quicker those costs will go up, because the quicker the landfill will fill.
And I agree with what you're stating, but that's not what's hap- that's not what's being shown, right? To your point.
Correct, correct.
We're, we're basically saying, hey, you guys can recycle, but if you don't want to, it's the same price. Well, the reason why we're recycling is to help out with the landfill and because the prices will increase. And so I guess I would like to see a little bit more of a, hey, here's what your price could increase to, even if you're not gonna recycle. If you recycle, it'll help, or something to that.
Well, and even more than that, Wasatch Integrated has committed that based on our percentage of diversion from the landfill, so they're gonna, they're gonna figure out how much was diverted from the landfill through recycling, they will actually discount our household fee. So the trash cost will go down from that seven-twenty. Now, I don't know how long it's gonna go down, but it will go down slightly from that based on the amount that we divert.
Some of those diversion discounts were a buck or two or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, depending on the city, they were down.
But that was probably eighty-five percent diversion or something like that, correct?
It was pretty high diversion. Well, it wasn't eighty-five percent diversion, but it was high, um, participation in the recycling program.
Oh, hi- hi.
Which creates more diversion, right?
Right, okay.
And one of the things that we've been in contact and, and discussions with Wasatch Integrated about is they have included in that diversion the, the green waste. Which I have a little bit of heartburn over for, for us and for you, because most of Morgan City's green waste goes to our transfer station. And I would say a good share of Morgan County's green waste goes over the fence into the cow. And so, I mean, I've never dumped grass clippings in my garbage can ever, and, and I don't intend to, they.
Nor have I.
Right, and so that's one thing that I've been in discussions a little bit and I brought up with Nathan a few times and I, I think you have too. So we'll work on that on the green waste side, but I think from a recycling perspective, the more participation we have, the more we can divert from the landfill, the less our costs are on the trash hauling side. So again, I think that just supports the idea that we should increase the trash more um, than just the twenty that we're gonna need to, to keep up with inflation and where we're at with costs, to hopefully encourage people to take advantage of recycling, if we choose to go with the opt-out.
What, what is, what does it been? Has it been twenty dollars for a long period of time?
It's been nineteen.
Eighteen for some time.
For what, four years? Has it only been two years?
Been two years or so.
I thought it's been like three, but maybe I'm wrong. We were, we were here.
We were eighteen and then we raised it to nineteen.
Yeah.
But. And I, and I, I'll just say this and then I'll shut up. Maybe. I kind of, I kind, I hadn't thought of that, but I agree a little bit with what you're saying, because we're not gonna go out and s- sell this, our, our constituents by showing this, but what they're gonna wanna know is they're gonna say, so how much more is that can gonna cost me? Just tell me how much more that can's gonna, that, excuse me, that recycling's gonna cost me. And so if your total cost is twenty-seven dollars and you wanna say it's, well, your garbage is gonna be twenty-two no matter what, your recycling's five more, I think that's a little bit more sellable. Then, you know, that's just my, I think that's not a bad idea.
And then if we go to the twenty, let's say it's the twenty-two number, and then our number for a hundred percent participation's twenty-five, that's, that's much closer to where we could even say, hey, we, we need this to be, well, we're looking at making it, I don't know if you'd say mandatory or not, but.
Well, and that's the other option, that's what we need to weigh out too. We could, we could do just a bundled service. There, there are municipalities in the, in the district that have gone both directions. Um, it's Woods Cross, right, that does the bundled? Yeah, Woods Cross does a bundled service. They charge it, uh, and I don't know what the dollar amount is. I think it is around twenty dollars or something. Anyway, they charge a flat rate and that includes your recycling and your trash can. If you don't want the recycling can, that's fine, they'll come pick it up, but you still pay the same rate regardless. That's a bundled service. Now, there's advantages and disadvantages to each, right? On, on an opt-out program, you could have those who would say, you know, I, I just am not going to fill a recycling can. I don't want a recycling can, and they don't, don't wanna pay the extra. Could be argued though, that by them not having a can, they're increasing the cost, because there's more going to landfill, right? Bundled program is, I think, a little easier to manage from a budgeting perspective and from a, from a billing perspective, because you wouldn't have residents on two different rates. Everybody would be on the same rate regardless. So. There's good and bad to both. I think the bundled service, if we went with the bundled service, I think we could go probably at twenty-five dollars and make that work. Instead of, if we go with an opt-out program, I think we're gonna have to be at twenty-seven total to, to make that work, based on the economics and, and the hauling costs. So there is some advantage to everybody if, if we went with the bundled service to that regard. It'd save everybody a couple bucks a month on trash service.
And there's just a comment on the opt-out, there are additional costs to running the opt-out program. So having a little bit more of a, included in the first can charge versus, cause the actual costs of delivering and picking up and then administratively keeping track of, uh, different billing. Everyone will be on the same billing cycle and there's gonna be, hey, what happened? I thought I opted out. Why am I being charged? Nobody picked up my can, all of those administrative burden things on the opt-out. So I like that idea if you do go the opt-out, um, you can do like a seventy-five, twenty-five. And then I have the updated numbers on A, B, and C without the seven, seven-twenty.
Oh, okay.
I removed those, so if you want those, I can. Those to you, we can just, it really doesn't matter for tonight, we're not picking a rate, it's just.
It's, yeah, more of the concept of it.
Yeah, but it's, so it's twenty, twenty dollars. Twenty and seven about on the first one. Second one's like twenty-two and five, and the last one's twenty-three and four. Those are rounded. Those are rounded.
You're saying these different numbers here, Ty, twenty-two, twenty-three and so forth. How is that working in relation to what you're showing that's on the paper? I'm not, I'm not understanding your numbers.
Fun A, where it says first can.
Yeah.
Instead of twenty-five, that would be twenty. Yeah, we started changing the numbers on that.
Oh, sorry.
So why would it go down from what we've got, what you?
We removed the seven-twenty.
Okay, so, but that has to be paid one way or another, correct?
It's, it's already included in our trash. It, it has nothing to do with the recycling. It's not additional cost.
I thought they charged us per can. Email from Robinson, it said the seven-twenty. So even though we're adding cans, they're not going to charge us on the recycling?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they, they won't charge us on that. Our only costs for recycling are the can, the administrative costs and the hauling costs. Correct. So our garbage service, the costs aren't really changing other than, I mean, over time, obviously, fuel prices and stuff have caused some, some increases. And we're at a point where we're going to have to increase no matter what on the trash side, just to keep.
It's going to go down after the first.
Let's hope. Let's hope that fuel prices go down, all right? But Steve will tell you that the cost of a truck to haul it is not going down, is it?
No, I'm sure that's not.
Yeah, Tony?
We also have operational costs that aren't included in this, so we're going to have increased. We've only got one pickup to deliver cans, right? So out of the gate, delivering a, a recycling can to every residence is going to take us, we're going to have to get a trailer and have some, some extra staff, so.
And I don't think we've included that either. We, we probably need to add a buck or so for that.
Yeah, so we'll have to round, but that's the hard thing is you have to, whenever you pick which route you're going, you're going to have to choose the rate before we know. So that's, that's really why I did the fifty-five percent participation rate. It's because you have to, you have to, for budget reasons, I'd rather err low and it doesn't change the overall cost.
So let me understand it just a little more. If we recycle, I mean, if we, if everybody has it a hundred percent, it's going to cost us somewhere around twenty-five dollars or twenty-two dollars approximately?
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Now, that's total.
That's total. Total cost per month.
That's including trash and recycling.
Okay.
That's right. Maybe a little less because we'd get a diversion discount, which may be, you know, anywhere from a dollar to, I don't know, a dollar twenty-five, dollar fifty, depends on how much we can divert.
So Tracy, you were shaking your head. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, no, I, yes.
Okay, so, so then if we go with a opt-out, it's going to cost less because they don't have a can?
Well, but our hauling costs are going to be more.
The hauling costs are going to be more.
Because from Robinson's perspective, if they can pick up a can at every house, they're running the truck down the road. If they pick up a can at every house at, you know, four bucks a can versus every other house at five bucks a can, it's the same, right? So they would rather pick up more than, correct me if I'm misstating this, but. Spreads the cost out.
So my question then is, is what happens with those people that hardly put out their cans? You know where I'm talking probably, myself included. You hardly put your can out and yet when we do, most, um, I'm just trying to figure out, okay. If we recycled and we have a can, but we never put it out, then what happens? I mean, you're still paying the same price. So what I'm wondering is, is just across the board, just keep the price the same, whether they opt in or opt out.
Well, that's what a bundled price would be.
Yeah, I know, so.
Yeah. I, I actually agree. I like the bundled idea from, from the perspective that I think it's easy. I think it's easier to, to explain and I think it's easy long-term. Because even if you go with the opt-out program in six or eight months, everybody's on a basically abundant program anyway. The advantage to the opt-out program is it would help those folks who maybe have been here long-term, are perhaps on a fixed income. Maybe it's one or two people living in a home. They're not going to use a lot of extra. For a lot of our residents, this would be a lot cheaper than having two cans.
Right.
And we have a number of residents that have two cans, but if you could get rid of your second can and just have a recycling can, you're actually going to save quite a bit.
Right, you would.
But it, it's really those few residents that are in the situation where, you know, perhaps they're not going to fill the cans. It's, you know, it's just them, that sort of thing. I think you're right, especially initially because our initial costs are going to be a lot higher than our ongoing costs. That initial cost of delivering all those cans. And that cost goes way up, in my opinion, a lot more with an opt-out program because you're going to have people call and say, come get this can. Probably a lot more than on a bundled program. There will still be people who say, I don't want the can, but I would guess it would be less. So it's less administrative cost.
So for these, some people that have like, I'm, I'm thinking of my dad. He puts out his garbage once a month. Now you give him two cans, he's going to put it out once every two months, you know, that kind of a thing. Because he'll either burn it or save it until he can burn or just because he wants to do that. So I'm just asking what, how, what is the advantage of that kind versus? Yeah, I know.
Well, he probably shouldn't burn it.
Well, he burns all the cardboard in his fireplace normally. So.
If you went to a bundled program, would, would you gentlemen consider a hardship case for individuals?
And that's something that the, the board, um, Wasatch Integrated has allowed. So we can do a hardship case and we could, you know, determine that. Tony, you and I talked a little bit about like maybe doing it based on the circuit breaker, you know, for, for property tax, but there wasn't a lot of residents on that. However, um, we're actually voting, isn't it on our agenda tonight? Yeah, so tonight, we're actually going to likely implement a, an update to that that's a little less restrictive than the state requirements for circuit breaker. It takes the income requirements to fifty thousand a year and a few other, other things. But my thought is that could be a good determinant for, for hardship case, you know? So if you qualify for that, you could also qualify for hardship case on your trash costs. And maybe in that case, you know, instead of twenty-five, you're at twenty. I, I don't know what that would be. We'd have to determine a rate for them.
Is that going to be an, a administrative nightmare for Cindy?
I mean, there will be some, but, but, you know, I, I see that no different than if we did the opt-out program. You're going to have the same thing where you're going to have residents on both rates. I think it's just.
I agree. I mean, no matter what you do, if you do a hardship, you are going to have a two-tiered.
You're going to have a few.
You'll have a two-tiered rate structure, so.
One way that a hardship case might help that I hadn't really thought of until just now, but if we did the opt-out program, you know, the requirement is after, after six or eight months, it, it goes to everybody's required to be on the program. But if you did the hardship case on a bundled program, even if you were a new move-in or you moved homes or whatever, had a new account, you could still apply for the hardship case. So it could help some people in that regard more long-term than, than just an opt-out. But anyway, that's just a thought.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I personally would be for a hardship case. I don't know how the rest of me feel about that.
I wouldn't mind that. I'm, I'm just thinking that, um, even in my dad's case, um, if we were to, I mean, I would like to have just the bundled service. If they don't want the can, it's still going to be that same cost. That's just my opinion. And then if, after a year, we determine that that's not going to cost that much to do it, then we drop the price.
Unless they qualified for a hardship case.
Yeah, and then that case, yeah. And that if they hardship, then of course that's something we just have to determine.
Well, frankly, I think if they qualify for hardship case and still want the recycling can, we allow them to have the recycling can. So I do. Because I feel like the people who would qualify for that, I don't mind as a, as a taxpayer and resident of the county subsidizing that slightly. It's, it's going to cost pennies, you know? I, I think most people would feel like that's okay if you're helping out your neighbor who maybe can't afford to, to pay for that, but.
So I would do bundled services at twenty-five fifty per month with a hardship reduction of twenty-five percent if they qualify. It would take them down to about nineteen dollars. Which is about where they're at, right?
No, like, like we talked there, like, uh, the chairman says, start trying to chase some of this out and by the time you go gather up a garbage can from someone on their hardship case, if they've got a big family, but their income's low, by the time I go pick that can up and we got to store it again, the three dollars a month difference it's going to make, have the can and recycle their garbage if they, you know, get that hardship case. You're going to spend three years of, years of savings by the time you go pick that can up.
Yeah, I would do the hardship is just a reduction in the fee. It's still a bundled service.
The service is the same regardless.
Minimum twenty-two dollars is, it's going to be a three or four dollar a month savings.
And then to the extent that that extra quarter that we're charging over and above this cost doesn't pick up the initial implementation cost, then I think we just pay for that as part of our initial implementation. The fund balance or the balance and, I don't know, there's a balance.
There's a, there's enough fund balance to cover the cost of that and, you know, at, at that rate, if we were at that twenty-five fifty, we would replenish that over a couple of years and the can cost side or something. Yeah. Which, I mean, I'm guessing we're not going to have, it's not like we're going to have hundreds of people that are going to even qualify for the hardship case. You're probably talking a few dozen, but to me, I don't feel like that's unreasonable. I, I like what you've proposed, Robert. You know, maybe we go twenty-five fifty as a bundled price. Hardship's a twenty-five percent discount. And we could keep that hardship twenty-five percent discount as, as costs go up too. So it's not a set dollar amount. It's always, you know, hey, if we increase the, the cost by ten percent, everybody's going to pay that increase ten percent. You'd still get a discount. I mean, we, we, Tony's, Tony's one of, of a group. He's got to still talk with the Morgan City Commission about it, but, or council, excuse me. So. She, she, she's ready. She's like, approved.
Just for clarification for notes, what's the definition of hardship?
I would tie the hardship back to the circuit breaker.
The homestead credit. I think if they qualify for either, either or. Yeah, so the homestead credit is going to be relaxed. Actually, tonight, that's on our agenda to, to approve the final version of that. But it, it changes the income requirement to fifty thousand. It does require that they can't have secondary homes, you know, that they own. And the homesteader credit requires that you've been in your, your home for twenty-five years. So we're talking about the long-term residents of the county. But I think if they qualify for either or, they should qualify for a hardship case on the trash. They'd request it, so when, and I think what we could do is figure out, maybe we work with the assessor's office and when they request circuit breaker or, because they do that through the assessor, correct? Oh, they do it through you? Oh, okay, perfect. Well, then when they request that through the clerk's office, you could see that and say, hey, they qualify for the circuit breaker, the homesteader credit, and we're automatically going to implement it on their trash as well.
It would technically be nineteen dollars and twelve cents.
So is what I wrote in the gray, correct, Robert?
Yeah, that looks correct to me.
Would we do, we, we do, they do get abatement on their property taxes, don't they? I, I don't think I necessarily would on that if, well, it's not veterans, it's, it's active duty, right? They get some abatement. It's not a veteran.
It's veteran.
Is it veterans too? Oh, I thought it was active duty. I mean, I think, well, if it's a hundred percent disability, so we probably don't have very many that are in that case either, do we? I, I don't know that I have a preference either, right? Matt, Jared, what are your thoughts on where we're?
Just what I initially mentioned. I think we got to show what the increase to that current, current garbage would be. Why are we doing this program? And I get recycling and I understand that and I think a handful of people will be on board, but if more than fifty percent of our county don't care about recycling, then why would we even implement this? So I think just stressing what we said initially a little bit more to say this is the reason why we're implementing this. Um, the cost will be going up and helping out, you know, the landfill cost, whatever you want to say, but we just got to, I think we got to speak to that just a little bit more.
I, I agree that. On our bill.
Cindy, can you talk into mic?
Yeah, so the, the short answer is no, we don't do a normal like newsletter, but we do a, a postcard bill for trash. And Cindy's talking about having a QR code added to that.
Yes.
That would direct them to a site.
Yeah, Jeremy and I are going to work on that and send it out in our next billing.
So I agree a hundred percent. I think messaging is important here and how we present this is very important. It, it should not be presented as, hey, you're going to have to pay extra for recycling because that's really not what we're talking about here. We're talking about really restructuring the entire, um, solid waste services for the county. And part of that restructure is to add a recycling program in order to divert waste from the landfill. Right now, a hundred percent of your trash that you throw in your can goes down to Leighton. It gets dumped on a tipping floor. They scoop it up and they put it in eighteen-wheeler trucks and they haul that out to the Ticoi landfill out in Twillen. So it, it goes ninety miles out into the desert and they, they actually tip it out there and dump it and landfill it there. So Wasatch Integrated will help us with that. They, they're, they're actually going to help us with that. They're also going to help us with some stickers that'll go on these recycling cans that tell you what you can and can't put in them. They have some videos available and they'll provide us with some QR codes for that as well. So they're, they hired somebody that her full-time job, in fact, she was the one that came and presented to us, Colette. Her full-time job is, is the PR portion of this. So we'll work with them to, to come up with something. And I think, you know, the city and county should be on the same page in the messaging that we send out. So maybe we can work with them to develop something, make sure we're all in agreeance on what it says. They had talked about that and I think they'll cover the cost of that, won't they? I think so.
Can you repeat what he said?
Uh, they would. They would provide mailers as well.
Okay.
And, and I believe they said they'd cover the cost of that.
Get my NAST programs from IT.
But, but there is a ton of information that's going to have to be, you know, forthcoming because people are going to have questions and the more you, you can answer those questions and let them know and be aware of what's going on, the better. There is going to have to be a lot of education, when, why, how, and all that sort of thing, so.
And, and one thing to note, Commissioner Fackrell, I heard your comment just now. Actually, they have procured some grant opportunities that help cover the cost of this recycling stuff. So that, the one grant is going to pay us back fifteen dollars per can if we go with a bundled service. But some of the grant monies also will help cover the cost of them doing the PR stuff, so.
But that's good. I just.
So it's not just us paying them and them paying somebody.
Pay them anyway. And so one way or another comes out of all of us.
Yeah. No, it, there is some grant opportunity that'll help with that. At the end of the day, our trash costs are going to exponentially increase when everything has to be hauled. Because the nearest landfill right now is, is the Ticoi landfill, the other landfill, the New Era landfill. It's, it's down, um, west of Utah Lake. It's a little further mileage-wise, but it's similar in time. Um, and Wasatch Integrated has an interest in that, in that landfill, they, they own a portion of that, so they will, the Bayview landfill, um, they'll be able to, to haul to that one as well, but hauling your trash a long distance is expensive versus taking it down to Leighton and dumping it. I mean, our hauler costs are, are greater than most of the district, or most of the entities in the district, simply because of the distance. I mean, Steve and his guys have to drive a lot further to, to Croydon than they do to Leighton and dump at the landfill, so we totally understand that, um, but.
What's the possibility of having a local landfill?
Good place.
It's a good question.
Ten years of federal startup funds?
Um, I actually got a call about that the other day from a, a local family that's interested in doing that, and I reached out to, to Wasatch Integrated to talk a little bit about that. The permitting process is pretty arduous and it's, it's state and federal permitting to do a landfill. Landfills have to be lined, you have to have the upfront cost to, to close the landfill as well, so you have to have a bond that will cover the cost of closing landfill, and that's millions of dollars. Wasatch Integrated keeps about, what is it, fifteen million on hand, just for closure of the landfill. It's a large amount of money. Yeah, the.
Well, and when you close it, it's not all the way closed, cause it gives us gas still.
Yeah, for the next, the next thirty years, you have to maintain that closure, they give off gases. Now, the gases, the, the Davis landfill actually sells those gases and, and generates income. What's that?
Weaver County does that on some of their old, old.
On their old stuff, Weaver County doesn't have a landfill anymore, or at least an open one, so all of their costs, they, they haul everything.
But their energy, they're producing quite a bit of energy out of it too.
Yeah.
These numbers we're looking at here tonight probably would look pretty good compared to trying to have our own, our own local landfills, so it's pretty, pretty pricey.
Yeah, I, the best scenario if that were to be the case, I think would be for, for a local to operate on their own as a private entity and, and charge a tipping fee to Wasatch Integrated. Now, when I did talk with, with Nathan and I, we only kinda crossed paths, cause he was on vacation last week, so it was voicemails back and forth, but he did indicate that if there were a closer landfill that was competitive in the tipping fees, they would be very interested in using it simply because the hauling costs are high. But there's, there's a whole nother group of challenges that come with that, I mean, you'd have to deal with neighbor complaints and zoning, and there's a lot that would go with that. One option could be like a C and D, a construction and demolition landfill, Summit County operates one of those in Hennifer. Those aren't lined, so they're, they're usually a little less expensive to operate, but you still have to have closure and post-closure and all that stuff, it's, anyway. It's something that could be explored down the road, um, but until such time as that's available, in twelve to fifteen years, the Davis landfill will reach its capacity and everything will have to be hauled, all commercial and, and residential waste, so, and, and the cost will probably double if not more.
I, I recall when we, I've been around long enough, you know, I recall when we were talking about becoming part of the special service district, there was talk about having a, trying to find a local landfill and that, as I recall, that was very contentious, it didn't go over very well at the time, so hence they decided to go with Wasatch Integrated or what, whatever, Wasatch Energy or whatever they were called back in those days, so. But yeah, I can even remember when they were talking about having a local landfill, and it, uh, it was quite a, quite a debated sub.
Mike, Mike, please, Mike.
Yeah, there was an open landfill in Stoddart for a long time there.
How about when we burned our t- tree dump over here? We'd light that on fire twice a year, that became quite a big issue as well, right?
So Ty for schedule, the next city meeting is the eighth, is this gonna be on that agenda? Yes, and so then our next?
It's not, no. Cause we, I mean, we wanted to wait till we knew how, where we were gonna go before we made a proposal.
You're gonna go after us, so our next meeting is the fifteenth? And then we have another one on the twenty-ninth, I believe?
Well, I, I guess at your next meeting, you'll discuss maybe in a work session and see where you land.
Okay, so if you wanna send me any updates or, and I'll forward this to you, back to you with that note. So then, um, I'll, you're gonna get me any work session notes from city, and then I will tentatively add it to the October fifteen agenda for commission. It's like chicken or egg, who's gone first?
So I don't know if this is a bigger hassle than it's worth in terms of implementation, but for those people that do have two cans, that are gonna give up one in exchange for a recycling can, do you wanna try to pick those up at the time you're dropping off the recycling, or is it better to just keep those functions separate? It's just something to consider in the implementation when you notify people what the program is.
I think Cindy has an opinion, but she needs to say it into a microphone. The beauty of YouTube.
My thought is I would like to pick everything up, and I have five hundred and like thirty-eight customers. I'm gonna put a lot of legwork in and call them and see, I will call them and actually ask them what they want. So it saves, in the long run, maybe, I don't know.
Do we know what the timeframe is for acquiring the recycling cans? Have we?
Um, four to six weeks, that was with our first, what he quoted me, but it could be eight weeks now, so.
So we probably oughta have on our next meeting agenda the, the purchase of those cans, cause we need to get going on purchasing.
Or an RFP or a bid, or what are you wanting?
Well, we've gotten bids, right?
Yeah.
So. How many haulers, or how many companies did we get bids from?
Two.
Um, I just go through Toder.
Oh, oh, four of the cans themselves, I apologize.
So we just barely put it out to bid, like, last summer? I mean, and we found Toder in North Carolina, or Texas, there's North Carolina, Texas, and.
So we've done the RFP process, now we're just, we've just ordered.
And they're the best price that we found.
So I think it's probably a purchase then, rather than an RFP. But we oughta get the cans ordered, and, and I, I think we assume, well, do we wanna wait and hear from you on? I don't wanna move forward with the bundled program if the city decides they're adamantly against it, but I guess either way, we've gotta have a can for every home, household, don't we?
It's the same number of cans, cause even on the opt-out, you deliver every.
And then they call, pick it up. Okay.
So it's the same.
So either way, we need to order cans for everybody.
Then, just to, to point, there's also people that currently have recycling cans that are gonna have to get rid of their recycling can and get a new recycling, that are hauled by ACE.
And that's a different program, right?
That's a whole different program, but it's the same thing, we have to swap out second cans and, there's gonna be more of them that are, we're gonna swap out their recycling.
And I could be wrong, but, and maybe Tony knows the answer to this, I think it was about twenty percent of households in the county have a, a, an ACE can, so about twenty percent are already recycling and choosing to do that through a third party. This will be significantly cheaper than what they're paying to a third party now. Yeah, the, the five hundred residents that have a second can and the twenty percent of residents that have recycling will see a savings. Well, I think the other thing we oughta consider is what, I would look to our public works departments that are gonna handle the delivering of cans and all that stuff to, to tell us what that's gonna take for a rollout. It's gonna take several months to deliver.
It's gonna take a while to get here.
Yep.
I mean, you need to check on your timeframe, it's because one of those states, the hurricane area, I'm sure, just started. Probably disrupt the supply chain significantly, I don't know, what portion of their supplies they get from overseas, maybe not much of it.
But, but maybe in theory, we announce the, the, the changes to the program, you know, starting maybe mid to late December, and maybe it goes into effect, you know, when we start, I don't know.
There's a, there's a whole checklist.
February, I don't know.
With Wasatch Integrated, once we choose which route we're going, then.
And they'll help us navigate that.
And then we, we kinda glossed over, but the county was gonna provide all the space to store these cans.
That's right. We can, we can probably figure out something.
It doesn't hurt to try.
Initially, especially the wintertime, it'd be great to store them at the fairgrounds. Fred's factors.
Michael, they removed the, they removed the penalty, they, they, they had a deadline penalty in there, didn't they?
They've removed the penalty, but the deadline is still July first of twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five.
But that's to have a program established.
Announced.
We, yeah, we, we could be, you know, partway into rolling it out, it doesn't have to be fully rolled out.
Right, correct.
So we're in good shape timeline-wise, I think if we can kinda nail this down by end of year.
And so just to clarify, recycling is still every other week?
Correct.
Okay, so Cindy, I'm one of the weirdos with two recycling cans, so FYI.
Just collapse those Amazon boxes a little smaller.
Uh, I don't do Amazon, but, uh, there's a lot of paper here in the county that ends up in my recycling can.
You gotta go paperless, huh?
Yeah. So.
All right, I think that's it.
Thank you so much for meeting with us.
Thank you again, Tony and Lance, Lance, before you go, I just wanted to mention, seeing your hat there reminds me, um, Lance played a, a big role in, in the truck pulls that occurred over the weekend, and just wanted to thank you for all your work in that, and thank the Lions Club for their effort, it was a good community event, brought a lot of people. I don't, I don't know how they did financially, but it looked like it was decent attendance.
Still haven't got all the numbers back on for the Lions Club and their portion fundraiser, but I know the raffle they were doing. Uh, every year, the Polling Association has done, tried to do a charity poll, and they kinda done it in the past for breast cancer research or treatment, they raised four thousand eight hundred and two dollars from the raffle that will go to the Huntsman Cancer Institute through, from, directly from that event that night.
That's awesome.
It's club, I mean, it's every little bit hell for your volunteer organization like that, so I, I appreciate the commission's support of that and the willingness to let us be able to use that facility and stuff. It's really is one of that association's better shows for the last four or five years, the little Morgan, you know, it's been a really good turnout, it's been a really good thing for the Lions Club over the last fifteen years, so I appreciate uh, the county and the commission's support on that event, so.
Awesome, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna take about a five-minute break, so we'll start our meeting just a couple minutes late here.
Janet wanted to try it and I forgot to put it back, I'm sorry.
I, I like it.
Have you been sitting on the floor?
More or less.
He wants, so then he got it, so then Janet wanted to try it to see if she wanted one, and I forgot to put it back. Oh, she's, it's your fault, Janet.
Does she like it, is the question?
She has to see it again.
Let's, let's hear it, let's hear it.
Thank you, boy.
You're welcome. I appreciate that. It's alright.
If you're just joining us this evening, there is a sign-in sheet, if you'd like your name listed on the record as having attended, we'd love for you to note your name over there, there's also agenda copies in the rear of the room. We just finished a work session with Morgan City, so we'll just be a couple of minutes and then we'll get started.
Before we get started, for those of you that are here for public meeting, um, there was a misconception last time, um, in the public, uh, planning, sorry, planning commission, that's a back and forth. Unfortunately, when you make, um, a public comment, it's not a back and forth with the board, because they're not the applicant. That's why it's not a back and forth, it's literally a public comment, um, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you, uh, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, today is October first, twenty-twenty-four. We just concluded a work session with Morgan City discussing changes to our solid waste management program. More to come on that for, for county residents in the near future. Uh, we will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Wilson has offered to, to take care of that.
Give thee thanks this day for our blessings, grateful for our health and our strength, and we're thankful, Heavenly Father, for this beautiful community which we are able to reside. Grateful for the good residents that reside here and all the good that they do. Thankful for the blessings that thou bestows upon us, the moisture, and we're thankful for all those who serve in our behalf to protect our freedoms. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for the bounteous, uh, crops we've had this year, and we're thankful for the way that the water in our dams have stayed, pray that we can. water in our dams have stayed. Pray that we can um, have a good evening this evening, that we can um, make decisions that will be best for our community and keep it in the beautiful place that it is. We appreciate all that thou does for us in our lives, and we recognize thee and and all that we have and do, and we say these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Appreciate that. Uh, we will begin with our consent agenda items. We have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Um, are there any questions about the items on the agenda from any member of the commission or any items that you'd like moved into the action item section?
None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion on the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve uh, by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All those uh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and is unanimous. Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest for any commissioners on any of tonight's agenda items. Okay, seeing none, we will move into our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission this evening. Um, let's see, I don't believe that we have any public, excuse me, we do have one public hearing. Um, that is item number eight. That's the rezone request for the um, parcels in the Harts Scrabble area. So if you have comments related to that, you will have an opportunity to address the commission during that public hearing for item eight. Otherwise, if you have comments you'd like to address to the commission, now would be your time to to make those comments. Okay, seeing none, we will move. Um, we do not have any presentations this evening, so we'll move into our action items. Action item F one, this is discussion decision, um, resolution CR twenty four dash eighty one, appointment of a commission vice chair. In accordance with our bylaws, I will open the nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate or move that we nominate Matt Wilson as vice chair.
Second. Are there any other, so we don't second this, we we ask for any other nominations?
I just I just second it.
You're okay. You can second it too. That's great. Okay, I see no other nominations, so I'll close the nominations, and then we'll look for a vote uh, to install Matt Wilson as the vice chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Um, all right, we will move to action item F two. Uh, discussion with our public works director, Mr. Brett Heiner, regarding community park improvements at the Enterprise and Milton Parks.
Think maybe virtual would have been better, I mean. So instead we're live, huh?
Yep.
Okay, we're a little improvement at the Enterprise and Milton Park. Let's talk about the Enterprise Park first. Got that map? If you've been down to that, if you've been down to that trail, you can see that it's, it needs some work. We need to get it overlaid. I'm worried about it lasting much longer before we have to rebuild. So I think we need to kind of do some of that. I'd like to make it a little bit wider if we could, and then if you look at the parking lot in the yellow, I'd like to improve that parking lot by overlaying it and then take those two wings out, make it a little bit bigger. Increase the square footage of it. So that's my proposal to do that.
And Brett, the cost I see here is the fifty two thousand?
Yes.
Fifty two eight.
That is our estimate for that. As for both.
So Brett, we discussed this a little bit with the use of impact fees, but so on the trail, I can see that we're expanding that.
Mm-hmm.
Widening that so that would, our impact fees would qualify for that work. Um, the parking lot.
Just expanding the the square foot, the footage of it, not the overall size of the outside perimeter.
So the the parking area would expand then, Brett?
Yes, so if you take that yellow area, you take the yellow area, and we would take out those wings right there and take those straight across and make that. Look down, point that out, right in the middle, we, the, so the parking comes in truck or car length, and and they have to go around two little islands, and they take them out and expand right there. So we would take them out ourself actually and and prepare that for paving. Pour some curb back in in front of that, so that it equals about thirty foot of curb total to expand that, so.
Will you be able to get it done this year or is this for next year?
This year if we get it approved. I've got uh, parsons on a tentative schedule if we do get it approved before. They probably can do it before November first, as far as the paving goes. We'll have to do our part, of course, before that.
Do we need to make it any bigger?
What's that?
Do we need the parking lot any bigger?
Well, this would, this would make it a little bigger in size, i- inside of the parking lot, but not, you know, as far as they make it the perimeter any bigger. I think if we make the inside bigger and make some more parking, it it'd get used quite a bit. That'll help, that'll help some.
Can we use impact, can we use impact fees for?
So that's my understanding is that if if we're expanding, so adding or expanding a park infrastructure, then we can use impact fees. If we're just replacing existing infrastructure, then we cannot. So where both of these, the intent is to actually expand versus just replace, I think that they would qualify.
Yeah, that's my.
That your understanding, Brett?
Yeah, and that's the reason I pursued this, to do it, so so we can use those funds.
So um, last meeting, we saw those those dollars, it was four hundred thousand and change was in the, in the uh, impact fees for community parks.
Mm-hmm.
We have two, two impact fee sections, one for community parks and one for regional parks. Regional park is the fairgrounds, the community parks are um, most of the other parks in the community.
And the other park would be Milton. Um, it's not currently paved.
Just one second though. So on the use of the funds, you're using impact fee for the actual expansion, but not the maintenance and overlay of the balance?
That's a good question. I don't know how that works. Any thoughts on that?
I don't know either. I don't know.
I mean, I would think on the trail, the, you're widening a trail, you're, you have to overlay the entire thing. I would think that.
Yeah, the same.
The question I think more is on the parking lot. Would it qualify for the whole thing or only for the expansion portions, right?
Yeah, I think we should look at that carefully, because I don't. You can't use impact fee simply for maintenance.
Right.
You can't throw an extra water fountain into the project and say, well, now it's new. So I think we should just look, I don't mind using impact fees for the actual increased capacity of the facilities. I think that's clearly what they're for, but let's be careful about the way we do that.
You know, maybe the safer way to do this is is to appro- approve the trail upgrade from impact fees and just do the parking lot from from general fund balance.
And I, and I can get that price.
We've got enough, I think, projects we could use the impact fees for that I don't know that we have to use only impact fees to do this.
And I can separate that out pretty quick, but it'll, we'll have to.
We've got to separate. Here's twenty twenty thousand nine sixty two fifty for the parking lot and thirty one eight fifty for the trail.
Do you want the statute definition of project improvements?
Yes.
It says, sorry, it helps if I leave them on. Project improvements means site improvements and facilities that are, one, planned and designed to provide service for development resulting from a development activity; two, necessary for the use and convenience of the occupants or users of development resulting from a development activity; and three, not identified or reimbursed as a system improvement.
It's a system improvement.
System improvement, I'll see what the definition is.
So if you're expanding the the width of the trail and expanding it because of increased use due to increased development, I think it qualifies. When you're talking about the parking lot, I think you might run into what Robert mentioned, which is, it sounds like you can use it for the expansion, but maybe not.
Increased use you would, because you'd end up with more.
I guess it is an increased use if you've you've got additional vehicles, but I don't know how that covers the existing asphalt, right? I think that's the concern.
Right, right.
I agree with what you said earlier, Chair.
Uh, if if we're being safe, let's just, let's pay the twenty one thousand for the parking lot from the general fund balance. There's enough there to cover it, and let's pay for the walking trail from the, from the impact fees, and then we're we're for sure complying and we're not walking a gray area.
And this is specific to the Milton?
No, this is Enterprise.
Enterprise, thank you.
Project.
So can we?
That's just a suggestion. If somebody has a different suggestion, let's go there.
What if we were to go and talk with the auditors and make sure? Or the state auditor? And find out?
Attorneys or Zions, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we ought to, because they're the ones that audit us every year and determine whether or not we did it right or not.
I was just gonna say Zion's rights impact fee reports, so hopefully they know what they're doing if they create them.
So, I mean, I would suggest maybe that, but I'm just wondering.
I'm fine with that suggestion too.
Agreed.
Well, we can approve it based on whichever.
Approve it either or.
Correct.
Yes.
I think the intention is to move forward no matter what.
And where the funding comes from, we can work that out after we determine what's legal and what's not.
We can approve the expenditure of the funding and then figure out which fund comes out.
Brett, just for my clarification, um, the bid on here, uh, yes, the one up on the screen, that's the one where I need to code.
Yes.
Thank you.
The other is the parking lot at Milton.
And this, currently, there's a small section that is paved, right, Brett? Just a little corner.
Mm-hmm, we're gonna tear that out, yeah.
So this would be replacing, well, adding asphalt, because it's never been paved.
Never been paved on the rest of it, even till the approaches to Morgan Valley Drive on both sides.
I think that existing asphalt is from an old tennis court, if I remember.
Yeah, it's gotta be something like that.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. You're right.
It doesn't make sense to be a parking lot there, the way it's paved anyway.
Okay.
Jared would know. He's old enough to know that stuff.
Wow.
I think that'd be a welcome improvement at that park as well, and would support that. Um, seems to me that that would qualify for impact fees based on what we've had.
Milton?
Yeah, because this is a complete, I mean, we're we're improving this due to increased use of the park. I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate that there's not a dirt road in the neighborhood anymore either.
That would be a big improvement.
Any questions then for Brett on the Milton Park project? Um, oh, there's a picture there. Okay, so we, that that purple area will be removed and replaced.
Yes.
So both the blue and purple will all be paved.
And we'll take that out ourself and get that ready for parsons.
I ought to also cut down on weeds a little bit there, won't I?
So when you want this out of fund balance, do you want a budget adjustment out of?
So this would be from from um, cap, uh, impact fees.
No, I'm sorry, the, the, I apologize, the portion that is coming from general from the parking lot of Enterprise, does that need to be a budget adjustment, and what line do you want it out of?
It would need to be a budget adjustment, and I'd I'd put it out of the parks probably.
Yeah, and I can, and I can.
But but it sounds like the the consensus was to check with the auditors and see if they feel like we could take the full amount from impact fees, and if so, great, and if not, take it from the fund balance. Is that correct? Okay.
But either way, I will put it on the schedule, too.
Wonderful. Yeah, and getting both done this year would be awesome.
We got a good fall. We gotta take advantage of it, huh?
Yeah, it's nice and, it's supposed to be warm for the next ten days at least.
Yeah.
Thanks for getting those numbers, Brett.
Yeah, Brett, just to verify on these for, from procurement standpoint,
Yeah.
did we follow all the procurement procedures?
We've got, we've got uh, parsons under contract still, just like our roads, so we.
Under a period of time. How how long do we have them under contract?
Three years.
Three years. Every three years, we do an RFP and.
And, you know, I thought I was maybe gonna have to put this out to bid, but no, if I do it wide enough, parsons can pave it, so there you go.
It'll, it'll be nicer too if it's paved that way rather than by hand. You won't get the.
Yeah, they, their machine can go down to eight feet, so. I didn't really know that. I thought maybe we'd, we'd have to go, you know, a smaller paving company to do that. They can do it for us, so that's, that's, I think.
So Brett, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
That little knoll right there in the parking lot, just across from the tree? Is that a ditch? No, up, down in the middle, right there, yeah. Is there a reason why that is there? Do you know?
I think there's a culvert to it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, well, that being said, if there's no more questions for Brett, we'll look for a motion on this item.
It's not a resolution, or is it?
No, we don't have a resolution.
So we don't have to have a resolution for this one, okay. I know that we approved the expenditure of of the hundred and thirteen thousand for both Milton Park and the Enterprise Park. As far as where the fund comes from, we'll determine that later.
So I think we we've agreed that the Milton Park can come from impact fees, and the walking trail for the Enterprise is definitely from impact fees. The the one that's in question would be the parking lot, and we'll need to confirm with the auditor if that can come from impact fees, and if not, we'll do a fund balance transfer.
And I already sent that email, so if not, uh, KD would come from ten thirty six forty seven.
All right, any, any comments on the motion? And is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Onto item F three. Brett, you're still up. Discussion of a crosswalk or reduced speed limit in front of Lee's Market in Mountain Green.
Okay, everybody get a look through what I've sent you so far. I talk about a hurry up and get things moving on a project, try to get something done, but uh, it was nobody really planned on that, having that problem that Friday after school, or, you know, I guess it was after school. Anyway, we do need to be careful on this kind of stuff, because we don't wanna, we wanna do it the safest way possible. It is a busy road down there, and I think you've got some examples in here if you read through it on crosswalks, but the study needs to be done just to see what's really the proper way to what we need to do in this situation. We are gonna put up some signs as soon as we get them that says no crossing for now, until we do get something figured out on a traffic study, so that is in the plans the next few days, so.
So Brett, just a thought on.
Everybody's gonna pay attention to that.
Yeah.
But you're talking.
Whether whether they pay attention or not, we we do have to have signs out there as quick as possible.
Right.
Um, is there, I I know there are sign companies that do have portable signs that read pretty much anything. Are we, have we checked all options on it? I think it's been a week and a half.
I've got a mortar. They're supposed to be in sometime this week. They're not a sign you put up every day. I mean, if I need a thirty mile an hour sign, I can get one in the morning.
So in the interim, Brett, can we just have the sheriff's office take our giant lit sign down there and put it in front of there?
Yeah, we haven't done that. We could ask them to do that. You bet.
So I would suggest we do that for now. I mean, it's a huge sign, but it'll tell them not to cross here.
VMS.
They won't miss the sign.
VMS board you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
VMS board.
So help me to understand the study requirement. To to know where to paint it, what kind of crossing to put in.
I guess, from my understanding is, is you typically don't see a crosswalk on a forty mile an hour. People don't slow down quick enough. They don't, they don't react quick enough, so usually.
Saying we need to put a stop sign in order to have the crosswalk?
Well, though, you, if you do a crosswalk, they'll usually slow down the speed from forty. And then sometimes they'll have multiple signs, multiple lighted signs that flash up. I don't, I don't know what they're gonna recommend, but.
Yeah, warning signs ahead and, and then one thing you gotta think about down there. is, is the crosswalk does not line up, so you don't wanna put a crosswalk on from here at an angle, because they're not gonna follow it anyway. You wanna make it as straight as you can, so when it is in, they go from point A to point B and not on an angle, because they'll, it's, it's like the signs you're talking about, you're sure they're not gonna use it unless it's improperly, so.
Maybe if we show, if we give them a place to go with a crosswalk without doing anything else, it's, it's probably a little bit more hazardous, so.
More hazardous than not having one at all?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
I can definitely appreciate wanting to have some type of a, a study done to understand what needs to go there. Um, addressing the problem immediately, I think we can address with some signage, although it's probably not signage, like you said, that will be heated.
I think it might be better to try to just slow the traffic down in the interim, like the speed limit signs.
Yeah, so it starts forty, just when it comes to the county line, just past the county line is forty, then it goes up to pass Silverleaf, stays forty, and then it goes to forty-five from just beyond Silverleaf to the Peterson Exchange, you have an idea. So it'd be my suggestion that we put it down to thirty there, if we really think we need to, um, and then keep it at thirty until Silverleaf. The, the local residents are gonna really have to get used to that, that's gonna be a real change.
Well, and we'll have to get approval through UDOT on the UDOT section road, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't do the UDOT section, just our section. I'm just talking about from just past...
The UDOT section is Sinclair to the exit, so they're stalking basically Sinclair the other direction.
They're forty-five there, by the way. But I guess with the traffic coming up from, on the UDOT road, if they're gonna go forty until Sinclair, and then have to slow down to thirty or twenty-five right at the crosswalk a few hundred feet later, I guess it's a regional, right? We're gonna have to make sure we discuss...
That's why you really have to warn them, too. You do, you just don't have that in, and don't have, and you're gonna have to warn them with a sign, okay, there's, there's, there's speed reduced coming out.
We'll have to include UDOT.
Yeah, so there is some, there's a little more to it, I think.
That conversation probably ought to take place anyway, in regards to the park that's further down that road, because we have a crosswalk there, don't we?
We're at it again.
Or I guess it's not a painted crosswalk, but the trail ends there and directs people to the park.
There's parks, you've got another crosswalk.
And we probably ought to talk about that with UDOT, there probably should be a, a crosswalk there, and it probably should be a lower speed limit if that's the case.
And I do get calls on that one, it's not our road, so I can't make any, you know, any...
But we could certainly talk to UDOT about it and see what...
Yeah, yeah, we can talk to their traffic engineer, they've got one of regional ones.
But I, I also like the temporary idea of using one of the temporary signs saying, watch out for pedestrians, you know? Or even those stupid little, maybe I shouldn't call them stupid, the little kids' crossings things that people put in the neighborhoods, you know?
Little flag.
Those things up there.
It says slow children on it.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it was amazing, the video to me, I mean, it was like, there was a hungry hounds of Budapest heading down their way, you know, to, to Lee's Market that opening day, and I get it was the opening day, we probably should've had the sheriff's department there to let him cross, but it was, it was amazing how interested they were.
So last Friday was the second Friday that that could've happened, and nothing like that happened Friday. So it was a one, and it was a grand opening type situation.
I'm, I'm sure that was the most. I, I had resident call me the other day and said, like, there's still quite a few of them that are headed over there after school.
Yeah, not near as many, and I've spent a lot of time down there.
Sure, yeah, the first one was like...
I've spent a lot of time down there, I've been down there a dozen times just for this problem, I really haven't seen very many cross, of course, it's the middle of the day sometimes, or, I've even been down there on Sunday, see what goes on on Sunday, and there hasn't been much crossing, so that was a crazy day, that was a crazy video you sent me.
Yeah, so how, how quick can this Joe Perrin, um, address, address this, how, how quick can he give us a recommendation?
Sound like pretty quick, sound like right away, I think he's, he's on board with us to get right on it, I need him to...
So we need to approve a cost to get this done, it sounds like?
Yeah.
So...
He gave you an estimate?
Says not to exceed five thousand.
Yeah, it's in your packet there. And I guess one other quick thought, I, I'm gonna send an email to Josh about this, but, uh, Lee's did do a traffic study, and if you, if you take their PDF of their traffic study and type in pedestrian, nothing comes up, so.
They didn't do pedestrian study, they done a traffic study.
Well, I agree, but a pedestrian, a traffic study includes pedestrian, so we might, maybe might wanna rethink on, I don't know what we require in traffic studies, but I, I think it's brought a new light for us to say, hey, we need to make sure we're addressing pedestrian traffic also.
Yeah. This could be a system improvement.
For sure.
It's caused by an increased demand.
If you wanna take my perspective, I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna end up dropping the speed limit, we're gonna put, we're gonna have to change the, the ped ramps, you know, the, the ADA ramps where they line up, so they'll turn and go across, we're gonna paint a crosswalk in there, we're gonna put in those beacon lights where they can, at least those, and the ones with buttons are more money, but that's even better, when they come up there, they hit the button, just like you're on Twenty-Fifth Street, and they come up, that's about your safest one. I'd be surprised if it comes up any different than that, but we'll see.
In the meantime, Brett, let's, let's talk with the sheriff's office about getting, we've got two of those lighted signs.
That's a good idea.
Let's put one telling pedestrians not to cross here temporarily, and one on the road, um, warning drivers that, that there's pedestrian traffic.
There's almost no place for the pedestrians to cross, though, I mean, they can't go to the Sinclair intersection and cross at a crosswalk, there's no crosswalk there, right?
No, and there's kids that do that if you go down to Sinclair.
So it's telling them not to cross worse than, I don't know, I mean, do we just use those signs to say, slow down, there's pedestrians present?
Because right now, there is no place for them to cross.
I would suggest we put them up and say, you know, slow down, you know, possible pedestrian traffic on both ends, and then you...
Yeah, and then you can post the other ones, I just think that...
So you're intending for this invoice to come out of in, in transportation impact fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we have a motion on this item?
Is there a total cost?
Yeah, it says not to exceed five thousand, it's two fifty per hour as well for, yeah, there's...
It's just for the study, though.
It's just the study.
You put in what he described you're gonna be spending some of.
Yeah, you'd be, you could be anywhere from sixty-five thousand to a hundred thousand to put in what we need to do, I think you're gonna be closer to a hundred, but...
That's if you do the lighted.
That's if you do the lighted, yeah.
If you don't do the lighted, can we just sign it?
Redo the ramps, redo the ramps is about seventeen thousand, and then you've got signs and, and then you got, you know, those signs will be, uh, solar, solar signs, so they're expensive, and there's no way to hook up the hours.
So obviously, we'll discuss that at that time, because it'll be over five thousand dollars, but are you wanting the temporary signage as well as the study to come out of a transportation impact?
I would suggest that, I don't think the cost of the temporary signage will be very much.
That's not gonna be much.
Okay.
And then we'll haul the sheriff's, whatever it's called, signage down there also, for now.
For now, yeah. We will get on that tonight or in the morning, so.
Okay, awesome. Okay, do we have a motion then on action item F three?
Make a motion that we approve the contract with A Trans Transportation Engineering, we now not to exceed five thousand for the addressing pedestrian crossing at, um, Five Thousand West Intersection Highway Road, um, coming from the funds as discussed.
Taken.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
KD, that's fun. Two eight three, oh, I'm sorry, two eight four four zero zero three oh five. I'll message.
Okay, Brett, back to you, action item four.
Yeah, I'm gonna go virtual on this one, so.
Okay, this is discussion on paving at the county airport.
Did you get the map on that? In the packet?
Yes.
On order, Joel here, I mean, uh, Joe, he's a, he's the county, he's the county airport manager. Anyway, uh, the reason this kinda come up is we do have a new, a new hanger owner that's willing to pay part of this, paving to Willow Creek on the one side. If you look at the, the one in blue, uh, he's willing to pay quite a bit of that to get us paved over to Willow Creek. The one in green is tying, uh, those taxiways together, and we do snowplow that, makes it a little tougher. And the other one over to the pink is the other taxiway going over to Canyon, or Cottonwood Canyon Road.
And you're wanting to take, take out the orange areas, I'm correct?
Yeah, that, that was something that Joe put in there, um, we can do that, but that was a lot of, that was, that was a hundred and money. Let's see, that was a, how much was that?
Is that even an approved entrance there?
Say that again.
That pink area, that entrance, is that an approved, improved, or approved, approved?
Well, it's been there a long time, it's gravel now, it's been there for a long time.
Yeah, been there forever. I think that was the original entrance.
Yeah, it probably was.
Where people went into the airport, I think the Cot, the Cot Woodland, or the Willow Creek Road, when it's actually the newer, right? So... I, I would do both, I wouldn't do the orange area.
No, that was something when, when I met Parsons up there to get a bid on this, I might come back, and he'd put that in there, and I mean, it's, could be done, but in my opinion, this would be what's necessary to get that paved into the road, and that, and that is what we snowplow, by the way.
So Brett, the, the eighty-seven thousand is the pink, green, and blue areas all combined?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the hanger owner's offered to pay twenty-five thousand of that. He would pave, if you look in the blue area, you've got that new, the building looks, probably just has the foundation during the time, he'd basically pave out, um, maybe halfway, maybe a little more, over to Willow Creek, and then he's wanting to add even himself paving, if you take that blue back towards, say, on the east side of his hanger, he's wanting to add that, but that'll be his, that'll be on his dime, so. And again, this is with Parsons, that, uh, they are under contract to pay for us, so. So, yeah, the county's portion, I put it on here, the county's portion would be sixty, sixty-two thousand, one ninety-two fifty, if we did that three areas.
In our budget discussions for the twenty-twenty-five budget, um, we've, we've agreed to establish an airport, um, capital improvement fund that'll help fund these types of projects into the future, and I think that'll be wonderful for, for this type of thing. Currently, we don't have an, an airport, um...
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement fund, thank you. So I guess any, any cost for this would be from general fund?
And we didn't receive any grants this year, Brett?
Uh, not that I know of, I'll have to ask Joe if he's, but I, not that I know of. We have received him before to crack seal and to seal the runway.
I think that one's, the crack, another crack seal one's in the works, I think it's gonna fund in twenty-twenty-five.
That one, as I recall, doesn't usually have a match, right?
It has a match, but we're usually able to do it with our own labor and match.
So is that just, that looks pretty narrow to me to have planes go down that?
Uh, well, I guess it...
With wingspan, is it just a dri, is it for trucks?
It's just a driveway, it's just a driveway, yeah.
That's what I thought.
That's the green area, right?
Yeah, the green area's just a driveway, tie them two together.
And we still only have the one fold-down area where the planes are at on the bottom part?
Yeah.
Okay.
So currently, right now, that has grindings in there, road basin grindings, both of them, or all three of them, yeah.
That green area, I think paving that would help clean that up a bit, too, and make it easier for us to clean that area between there and the road.
Plus the dust won't be as bad, then the neighbors.
Yeah, it'll make snow removal a little quicker, we'll be able to stack it better places and...
So the opening you have on the blue area, is it, I mean, it looks to me like it's wide at the front, goes in, narrow, and then come back, back out, how come we don't have it too much straight?
Yeah, that's about a, it's about a twenty-four foot opening, I think, the way that comes in, that, I don't think that drawing does it justice on that.
As you say, this isn't our code for normal residential, rural residential, it's thirty feet? I'm just trying to...
I think that's a retention pond right there, isn't it?
All right, I don't know, that's what I was...
But on this side, yeah, on the, on the north side of it, that is a retention pond, yeah.
Brett, do you know if the price included recent utilities on that green section?
I think we got a few utilities in there. Um, I know we do have a sewer in there, and I, and I actually fixed that last year because we did, they did get hit with a snowplow, and broke that man, broke that man, broke that cone, you know? So I did fix that, um...
Well, do you, do we have money to raise the utilities, or put the asphalt in, or is asphalt just gonna match it?
They were just barely put in.
Yeah, uh, no, I haven't put anything in there to raise utilities, just, that'd be on top of that.
Do we have any thought on what that might cost?
Yeah.
Is it just the one that's, uh...
Every manhole we do is around thirty-five hundred bucks, so, give me an idea.
So maybe another ten thousand?
That'd be the most, yeah.
Well, seems like a worthwhile project to do. Is there something we can get done this year as well, you think?
Same thing, we've got them on a tentative schedule, just like the parks.
I think it's a worthwhile project to do, I think it's important to clean it up and make it look better, I also believe that the berm that we've discussed in the past is an important project, and if I were actually prioritizing it, I'd probably go the other direction, but this is, I mean, I, I think when you've got the paved surfaces connected to dirt coming in and out, it just, it makes for a pretty sloppy looking facility.
That brings up a point, though, we probably ought to consider placing some conduits under this in a couple of places, if we do end up doing some landscape work there, it'd be nice to be able to run, and not have to tear up a new, new drive to do that.
Especially underneath the driveway.
You're talking about putting, you're talking about putting irrigation on that hillside, is that...
Well, if we do, I don't know that we will, the truth is, I think we'd be better off doing like a ziriskate there.
Yeah, I would, too, yeah.
But, but if we needed irrigation for trees or something, I think it would be wise to throw some, you know, three-inch conduit under there.
We could do that, that wouldn't be a problem, but I would, I'd definitely go for ziriskate in my...
Oh, I agree with that as well, but even ziriskate requires some irrigation, so...
Yeah, we can put that in, that's not a problem.
Let's plan on that, if we're gonna do it, just to think ahead a little bit.
Make, make sure you put the conduit or whatever for the water underneath that going in where the blue area is.
Yeah, we, yeah, we...
Just in case we decide to use some of the runoff from the...
We'd probably keep it off the main traffic area.
Island, or from the Cottonwood area.
That'd be something we'd probably do ourself, get that ready.
So I, I know this will be in the future, but is there anything stopping this typical resident from just driving in there?
No.
Okay. I'm surprised.
Not yet.
Not yet, should be putting a gate in there.
I'm surprised that there's the ability for...
Probably ought to consider that.
Somebody to just drive onto a, a...
Especially at night, we get to close it up during the day.
Well, and that's another reason to have some conduit under there, if you need to run power for a gate.
Yeah, none of us gated yet.
I know Buster's gonna put in a closure on his end at that point, so that's electric, and, because there, that'll be the third entrance in that side.
So adding the raising of the utilities and the three-inch conduit, how do you want me to do a budget adjustment estimate for that?
Brett, do you think if we just did like fifteen thousand and, up to fifteen thousand in cost to cover that, do you think that'd cover it?
Yeah, you're talking about for the conduit.
Well, between conduit and raising the...
That'd probably cover, yeah.
So fifteen on top of the sixty-two and change?
Especially if we do some of it ourself, we can.
Just so we can approve enough.
Fairly inexpensive budget.
So if I did a sixty-seven five, and then your options for expense line item, um, do you consider this an improvement or maintenance?
An improvement.
Improvements. Okay, so your choices for improvements is improvements, improvement other than buildings or a capital outlay?
What, sorry, what are you, what are you discussing?
Improvements, improvements other than building and capital outlay.
Yeah, that's the three expensive.
Those are some duplicative accounts.
You think?
Certainly, yeah, these are improvements other than buildings.
Okay.
And I think the amount probably, cause it's sixty-two for just the paving, if we add fifteen to that, you're seventy-seven.
So you're seventy-seven one ninety-two.
If you did like seventy-seven five would probably cover it all.
Okay, I'll write it up.
Are we, are we putting that together as a, to come back? When you say you'll write that out, or are you just talking about?
I was just talking about the budget adjustment.
Okay, okay. So we need a motion then on this item? And I'm assuming that the fund source would just be general fund balance?
Actually, there's another one we could use it for.
What's that?
We can actually use another one, but we haven't budgeted that one yet.
You want to try to use it for this, or do you want to just do fund balance for that?
Either one you want. I'm just saying there's still, there's two different ones that we can pull from, so either one. They're illegal.
There's a healthy fund balance, I don't know that it's. Guess who ever makes the motion kind of second?
I'll make a motion that we approve the paving at the Morgan County Airport. The budget amount of seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the taxiway, the taxiway to Willow Creek and from the taxiway to Cotton Road. Funds to come from the general fund balance.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I probably should have made this comment on his chair. So where, so where's this estimate coming from?
Parsons.
Parsons. Parsons, okay. We just don't have it in the pack up, but we did get an estimate from him.
Yeah, I didn't give it to you because they had that, that other estimate in there and added another hundred thousand. Just didn't get it back. The prices are the same on the other three colored balls.
Any other questions? You still good with your?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Are we good for another year on that price for square foot?
Yeah, well, I, and that's the reason that I put them under a three-year contract is that they can't raise their prices for three years. And, and, and we can extend it a year if we want, if they'll keep the same price. We did that last time.
What's the heck of a price?
It's a good price. And they've come back down. This year, we've done well on paving. The prices are going to come back. Old Highway coming a lot better than we thought it would because of the asphalt price to come back down, so we hope that stays that way, yeah.
Sure. Brett, thank you for your work on Old Highway, by the way. I think there's a lot of residents that are very happy with that, that project, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Turned out nice now. Nobody can cut it.
Yeah, yeah.
Brett, would you send me the?
Just don't cut it for utilities, right?
Would you send me the Parsons estimate?
And while you're doing that, I'll just mention for the benefit of the public, um, that project was done using a federal grant. Morgan County was on the hook for six and a half percent of that total cost. It's a little over two million dollar project. Without those federal monies, we would really struggle to do those types of road projects because our road funding amounts to about six hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't pave much with six hundred thousand dollars. Brett and his group do a good job at trying to, um, access those federal funds. That's what paid for the Morgan Valley Drive repaving that took place a couple of years ago. It's also paid for three different bridge projects in the county, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for, for working on those grants.
What I'll probably do in about a month or so, we kind of get these bridges, um, wrapped up and get Morgan, where you get the old highway paid for, I'll, I'll bring all those numbers in too, and you'll be, you'll be amazed on how much grant money we've really got. You know, the federal grant money and the, and the match that we've paid. We've got a total upwards of seventeen million dollars total since I've been here.
That's fantastic.
So that's pretty good. It's pretty good for the county.
Take us an awful lot of time at six hundred thousand dollars a year to make seventeen million.
Be pretty tough, wouldn't it?
Be real tough. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Okay, moving on to item, action item five. Janet, our deputy county attorney, and Josh.
Um, thank you. Couple meetings ago, apparently, um, a discussion of right-of-way excavation permits was, uh, brought up. Um, and it's kind of interesting that Brett's last project about Old Highway Road and the paving that occurred there, um, cause it kind of segues into this. Um, Dominion Energy has already gone out on that pavement and done, and has conducted a blue stake to what appears to be, um, them cutting, uh, the road to put in a gas line, so, um, the right-of-way excavation permits, um, I think they're important. Uh, the problem is, um, when they come in and they talk to Public Works or, uh, so either, um, Brett or John Harrison, uh, they say it's an emergency. They'll start the work and then they'll come in, they'll apply for the permit, but they'll never pay a bond, uh, to help us protect that asset for the one-year maintenance. Um, and it's, uh, been an ongoing issue since I started here. Uh, that bond is what we use or would use to protect one of the county's greatest assets, uh, the roads. Um, and we're not getting those bonds. And once they've completed the work, even though they've applied for the permit, they never finished the permit process, so that's never issued. And so we don't have a record of them getting the permit. There's no record of them contacting us and, or sending us a letter of certification that they've completed the work for us to go out and inspect the right-of-way. And then we have no stick to make them pay the bond after the fact. Um, I will say that tracking all the bonds that we have been able to collect from those individuals that have followed the process, uh, is a nightmare, and that's kind of, uh, another side of the, of the story. Um, I think the best way to handle this going forward would be that we have everybody that does work in our right-of-way enter into a franchise agreement, which has a, a limited term of five or ten years, whatever the commission, uh, wants to approve. There'd be a bond, um, submitted to the county at the time that that franchise agreement goes into place. We hold that bond for the length of the franchise agreement. That way, I don't have to keep collecting and tracking, um, how many payments they've made, who's made those payments, and then issuing refunds. Um, the franchise agreement, I think, is the best route to go. That would be my recommendation. Um, and Janet's been working on that. Uh, did you have questions or things that I can kind of talk to you about?
Yeah, I guess, I'm trying to understand this a little bit. So we're having issues with our emergency excavation ordinance because they're not, um, coming in and discussing what we need them to do with us. So, and I'm paraphrasing here. So instead, we're going to add an agreement and say, okay, now you need to come in and talk to us. I guess, I'm trying to figure out, I'm, I, I'm not discounting the bonds and tracking them. That is a pain, and I, I hear you there. Um, but I guess the concern I have is that I feel like we're, if we can't even get them to, to give us a bond, how are we going to get them to come in to sign an agreement?
Well, the franchise agreement would have provisions in there for them to go into our right-of-way and conduct the emergency work that they would have to do. And if we require them to pay that bond upfront as part of that franchise agreement, uh, then we have it in place and I don't have to continually track it. So the franchise agreement is supposed to have all those provisions, our relationship with the utility company or the individual doing work in our right-of-way, how we handle emergencies, um, how the permitting process should be handled. Um, we have multiple franchise agreements right now. A lot of them are, are really old. Dominion Energy, the franchise agreement isn't even called Dominion Energy. Um, it's like five parent companies back or whatever. Uh, and it was a fifty-year agreement which expires in three years. Uh, Rocky Mountain Power, we have a franchise agreement with them. Um, but there's no bonds in place. And I understand if a utility company has operated in good faith and has made those repairs and has been responsive, then, then maybe a bond isn't needed, but my recommendation is we get a bond. And, and we hold that bond and for the, for the length and term of that, that franchise agreement to protect our assets.
So we're not talking about the general public? We're talking about private companies?
Um, any company?
All the above.
Uh, if there's a private individual who is operating as part of a company, then they should have a franchise agreement which outlines our relationship with them to cut into our right-of-way or to work in our right-of-way, period. That's my opinion.
When you said there's no recourse to, to have them pay for those bonds at this point, can't we refuse to give them, allow them to do any more work until they do that stuff?
Um, the problem with that is there really are some emergency situations and these individuals are the ones that are contracted to do that work.
By?
Uh, by the utility holder or the, the ditch company or, or whoever it is that they're doing the work for. And so there, there is a negative impact on the end user or the, the residents of, of the community, so. So even those individuals who are contracted to work, they're still working on behalf of a company to, to do that, to do that work.
So ideally, uh, an organization, company, be it a contractor or a water company, gas company, whoever, would come and set up a, a franchise agreement before there's an emergency. And so that when there is an emergency, they're not scrambling to try to do the paperwork for that particular emergency, which I think addresses the concern that was brought to us by Highlands Water Company a few meetings ago when they came and said, look, this is hard for us to come in every single time we have a water leak and try to post a bond with you. We'd rather have something established that, that allows us to do the emergency work, fix the, the problem and, and move on, right? Do you feel like this would address that adequately?
My professional opinion is that the franchise agreement would fix that. And it would make my job easier because I'm not, I'm not having to track bonds over multiple years for multiple companies and multiple bonds for the same individual.
So really, we're discussing private companies or, or public entities mainly. We're not discussing, um, a resident digging in the right-of-way to, to throw a lateral in. Uh, I mean, how we?
Well, I don't think a resident would be the one to throw in a lateral. I don't, I don't see that.
Uh, sorry, builder.
Um, well, if a subdivision is constructed correctly and the right-of-way infrastructure is put in, all of those lots should already have the utilities stubbed to them. And those utilities would have gone in as part of the subdivision construction.
I'm trying to think of something that isn't normal.
Yeah, I.
So a lot comes in, there's a water line in the road, they come in and say, hey, I don't have a stub, I need to connect to it, and the contractor will be doing that. So are we going to require a franchise agreement with just a typical excavation contractor is my question?
That would probably be too much for an individual who, who needs to fix a situation in front of their home. Um, and we can keep the current si- current process for that. But those aren't typically the ones that we see. The ones that we're seeing are Dominion Energy, Rocky Mountain Power, uh, Beehive Broadband, um.
Everybody in the right-of-way?
And, well, there are, there are certain individuals who are contracted by the companies and the, the secondary water companies to do work, who, who have their companies in the county. I don't want to name names, but.
Again, everybody in our right-of-way.
Yeah, our right-of-way.
Makes sense.
Well, you know who, who's, who doesn't, so you can have them come in previous, right?
Yeah, well, even those individuals, we've told them, if you call Brett or John Harrison, you have them come out and look at the issue. If they determine it's an emergency, then you can start work immediately, but you have to complete the application process, but they're just not, they're not doing it.
How would you determine the amount of the bond?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, we'll probably have to do a little bit more research on how to create a rational nexus for that.
So are you just seeking direction from us so that you can then work on what you want to do in terms of a specific proposal? Is that what?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, Janet has been working on the, the draft language for the, uh, franchise agreement, um, and, yeah, and ordinance.
Okay. Um, can I make a quick comment on that ad that I've experienced in the past? But if we could add in those franchise agreements, something to the effect of, I know some entities have it in place where if they come in and widen their roadway and you as a private utility company are in the way, you, at your expense, you need to move hundred percent because there's other road entities that do a fifty-fifty and, but I, I've just seen it with public counties that they can say, hey, you guys gotta pay for, for this to be moved so we can widen our road.
One hundred percent agree with you. The county should not have to pay to move their, their infrastructure. They should do that.
Yes, let's have it in there. So one other item that I'll add to, and Brett will probably roll his eyes when I say this because I bugged him about it enough. Um, we need to have something in there that discusses the requirements for repair when they cut down the side of the road. We have a situation in Croydon where the gas company came in and cut six to eighteen inches off the edge of the road, came back and cut another foot off and then repaved it. But it's so narrow, when they repaved it, they repaved it by hand, and so it's, it's a washboard now, and it's going to fall off the road. We need to have something that says, if you're going to cut into the side of the road, you got to replace to the middle of the road, or something adequate enough that we don't just have edges of the road falling off because they've repaved. I mean, we all know a foot of asphalt is going to do nothing when you drive over with a truck except break off. So anyway, just something maybe we can include in there. And Brett may have better ideas on how we phrase that, so I'd maybe suggest you work with him as well on that.
That's a good situation where a bond would have helped because we could have already cashed that bond if they had refused to do the work and gone in and done it ourselves. Um, and if it went over, I guess we could try to build them for the, the excess. Not that, I don't know if we could collect that.
And also, I think just adding in that the reason that the bond is nice is because that's when, well, if you have the bond in our code, it talks about a warranty period. And so getting the engineer out there, it's not just, um, you know, they say, hey, we've done it. We would have the engineer out there and then there's some fees that I think could be put into the statute as well to cover whatever engineering because not everyone's going to do the same job in replacing the right-of-way. And so that's part of the bond, and if the fee's built into the application, then the engineer can have that review to make sure the warranty period is, is appropriate, or at least that it's acceptable before the warranty period starts.
Brett, did you have a comment?
So working on these bridges and stuff, I really had to deal with a lot of this franchise agreement and had to deal with one that's fifty years old, and it was tough. It made it tough on me to deal with it, so this is a good idea. And you've got to remember that, um, all these utility companies are a guest in our right-of-way. That, uh, the residents of Morgan own the right-of-way and they're all a guest. Everybody's a guest in the right-of-way. So if they, if, if we, if we widen a road or I have to put a covert in, some kind of drainage system, it should be on their dime to move that. It's not, it shouldn't be on the county, so you're correct about that, Commissioner Anderson.
Another question or thought, um, is there a way that we can encourage utility companies to use non-invasive methods on our roads like horizontal drilling rather than cutting the road? I don't know how we would do that. Maybe it's through the bond process. Maybe you get a, a lower bond if you agree to, you know, use horizontal drilling rather than cutting a hole across to put a gas line in?
Um, jack and boring is, is a method that, that is used both for extending utilities underneath existing roads, freeways, highways. It's a little bit more expensive, obviously, um, but you don't want to cut a new road, like Old Highway Road where they overlaid it. You don't want to cut that for several years because it undermined, it's like a rubber band. When you nick a rubber band, it, it breaks. Um, that's pretty much what the asphalt is. It's like this giant rubber band. Um, and the more sun, it kind of bakes it and hardens it. So not cutting it is important for a certain period of time to protect the, the integrity of the road.
Well, maybe we need to just include that, that it cannot be cut for a certain period, and if, if utility work needs to be done, it'll have to be done via boring. Anyway, just some thoughts. I, even, even if the road is old, though, anytime you cut it, you end up, you know, we've all driven over that speed bump in the road. So if there's a way that we can encourage, like I said, a non-invasive, you know, approach to it, I think we ought to encourage that, whether that's through a, a lower bond or an easier process or something that would encourage them to spend a little more money to do it rather than dealing with the county in a different way.
I would agree with you, and that should be in the franchise agreement.
I like it. Any other thoughts, Commissioners? Okay. Um, do you have your marching orders? Do you need anything else from us?
Uh, no, we will finalize the franchise agreement. We'll, uh, do some research to create the rational nexus for the bond amounts, and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you. Love it.
Thanks.
Okay, Janet. Um, this is Resolution CR twenty-four dash seventy-seven, a final version of the Homestead Credit Application. First, just wanted to thank you for your work on this. I think this is a really important thing that we're discussing here and, and could really benefit some of the residents of our community, so. Um, once this is established, it'd really like us to work to get the news of this out to those who might be able to use it.
Okay, so on the resolution, I fixed my typographical section errors, so that's updated. But there are a couple of things I need to point out that we did change in the.
Janet, are these changes since you sent me the packet file?
No.
Okay, thank you.
These are the ones. Um, these are the ones that Penny went through. So I did remove the six and seven of the criteria from the application and from the criteria approval and public notice document. We added the Morgan County logo to make it look nicer. Uh, one of the things that had gotten missed that Penny had pointed out is if you look on that homesteaders' credit criteria, the first page, where it talks about the requested credit on the bottom, there's one and two, and I had it drafted "or." The original intention was "and/or," and that's the original amount. I think Penny had come up with, it came to $53,000. So the commission could do, you know, both of those tax credits, or just one of them or neither. And that was in her, when she spoke to you before, I think. Yeah, the additional $53,394 cost to the county that she had spoke about in the initial proposal had included both of those tax credits together, not the "or."
Catch it, one "or" or the other. Okay.
I have a question for me.
Yeah?
Um, did we ever determine if the household income was supposed to be adjusted gross, or is it just flat income?
Oh, that's a great question. How does, is that typically done for the-
For most of them, I don't know. I don't know what it is on whatever list.
And that is definitely a Penny question.
And then-
I would assume we would use the same criteria as the circuit breaker uses.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, and I don't know exactly what that is.
And I can almost guarantee you, they're using the same criteria from the circuit breaker, because that's what this has been entirely based on. In fact, one of the things that we had removed regarding that they financially support themselves, that was listed as a criteria in the circuit breaker, and basically, apparently, what that means is that no one else can claim you on their taxes. Yeah, so.
I would think it would be gross, say, to-
Yeah, I would think so, too, because if it was net, you could probably get to that through a number of-
Right, you could.
Of financial maneuverings.
Yeah. I was just curious if there was any criteria in that or not. And then there was the other question that I sent to you today, Janet. Did we hear back on any of that one?
I did not hear back from Penny. And what Commissioner Fackrell had asked is if someone owned two residences, could they still qualify under these criteria? And I would assume that they could.
As long as the second residence isn't an income-producing residence.
And that's what I said, too. And then in addition, if there's any concerns about it, that's why we drafted it this way, so that the commission can consider other criteria as they determine should be considered.
Should we consider adding, indicating that it's the property owner's gross household income?
Or just follow the circuit breaker laws?
And it does say on the criteria that this is based on the circuit breaker.
Okay. As long as it's listed somewhere, I just don't want that to become a contentious item because we didn't address it clearly.
Right. I agree. So can we approve it tonight, or do we need to make sure, and if it's certain of anything, or?
I think I would still add gross in there and approve it that way, but that's me personally. If you don't feel like, that's okay.
I, yeah, I can add the gross to it if you guys want to approve it with that gross added to it, and then I don't have to keep coming back here to fix my typos.
I think that's a great request.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution CR-24-77, a resolution of the County Commission of Morgan County, Utah, approving criteria for the homesteaders' credit with the change that the criteria with respect to income be gross income.
Thank you.
Second, a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Um, before we move on, I'll just, for the benefit of the public, what we just approved is an opportunity for what we're calling homesteaders in the county, which are individuals with, who are 65 years of older, gross income of less than $50,000 a year, and have lived in their home for 25 years or more in the county to receive a reduction of their property tax amount. And the idea behind that is to try to keep those folks who have been here a long time and who have paid into the system for a very long time in their homes. We know that that's an issue and a concern, and we really want people to be able to live here their entire lives. So if you know somebody that fits that criteria, we would love for you to share that with them. We'll try to get the word out as well, but I think that's important for people to know that that's available to them. I know there are some folks who might feel a little bit shy about disclosing their income, but this is one thing that I think is worth doing that for if needed. So if you know somebody that might be in that boat, please, please spread the word. Okay, let's move on to action item number seven. Um, Leslie, this is discussion decision and approval of our amendment of the 2024 Morgan County budget. While Leslie is coming up here, I'll just make mention, starting, did we start this last year where we started doing quarterly? We did. Right? So starting in 2023, and now we've done it through 2024, the county used to do budget amendments once a year at the very end of the year for the previous year. We've started doing this on a quarterly basis, and it's helped us in a great deal of ways. Number one, it helps us with our budgeting, because we get to the budgeting time of year, which is now, and we can look and see what our actual expenses have been for the year as well as revenue. So the reason the budget for 2024 has to be amended is because we will set the budget based on our projections, and then things happen, right? We just witnessed a few of those here where we had a request for paving at a park, right? And we've got to move money around to get it in the right budget to pay for that paving. So that's why we do these budget amendments. In other situations, we might have an increase in revenue come in, maybe there's a grant that one of our employees worked to obtain. We have to adjust our budget to show that grant in the budget so that we can then expend the funds from that. So that's what we're talking about here. We've got several items where we're, in most cases, increasing one line item and decreasing another to move funds around within our budget to make sure that we don't go over budget in any one category. So with that, Leslie, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the highlights.
Okay. I am here seeking approval of Resolution CR-24-79. This resolution will be making a department adjustment for recreation, fund balance adjustments for courthouse building and grounds, human resources, IT, wildland fire, and ambulance, and budgeting for a grant received by the Sheriff's Office for car camera equipment. Do you have any questions about those? Pretty easy this time.
Um, so you're bringing the revenue for the recreation, is that going to come from any particular funding to be able to pay for that?
It's moving from one line to another line in our department.
All right. And then to just let everybody know, when the Sheriff's Department, it was a grant that they have received, and that's why we have to do that adjustment.
That's correct. We didn't budget for it when we were doing our budget for 2024.
Okay, so that's an example of what you were just talking about.
Yep.
Good example. Okay, any questions on the budget amendments?
Make a motion that we close the meeting and open the public hearing.
Thank you.
What's your say?
A motion, a second, to close the public meeting and open the public hearing for purposes discussing CR-24-79, amending the 2024 Morgan County budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now in public hearing regarding item number seven. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will look for a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So move, second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now back in the public meeting regarding item number seven. I'm going to look for a motion on CR-24-79.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution CR-24-79, a resolution of the Morgan County Commission adopting certain amendments to the Morgan County 2024 budget. A second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight. Uh, this is a public hearing, planning and zoning decision. Josh, we'll go to you, or Jeremy, you're presenting. Awesome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the County Commission. Um, action item F8 pertains to application number 24.049. The applicant being Roger Eggit. The location for the request is 667 West Hardscrabble Court. The, um, the request for tonight is a rezone from a split designation that is currently on the property between A20 and RR1, that's agriculture and rural residential, one acre minimum, on a property that comprises of 20.31 acres. Uh, and, Mr. Chair, the future land use map reflects this, at least a similar zoning designation between rural and agriculture. The request being to rezone from that split designation to Ranch Residential 5 and Rural Residential 5 completely. Uh, staff has done a review of this request and founds that it meets our minimum code requirements for accomplishing a rezone, and the request being Ranch Residential 5 is present on an adjacent property to the east, with many surrounding, or with a lot of the neighbors in the area, having between one to about five acres on a lot of those parcels and lots in the nearby subdivisions. Um, the, Mr. Chair, the planning commission heard this item on their regularly scheduled meeting on September 12th. There was, uh, actually an abundance of public comments, most of which could be essentially boiled down to the fact that there are issues with water in this area. That's what the public comments were. The planning commission made a, or heard those comments and made a recommendation of denial for this item unanimously, 5-0 with, 5-0 being the vote, and Member Bishop being absent from that meeting, with the finding for their motion basically effectively being based on the public comments during the public hearing, anyway, the comments during the hearing, uh, that if such a property were to be rezoned, that water could not serve the property. Staff disagrees with such a claim from both the public and the planning commission. Uh, for the reason that no such studies have been done to substantiate that claim, that water could not serve X number of lots per subdivision of five-acre, uh, lots in a future subdivision. The bottom line is, for a rezone application, we look at the surrounding properties, we look at it as a case-by-case basis, and we look at the future land use map, and that's effectively the scope of the review. It's if you follow down the line from a rezone, which is a legislative action, down to when that changes, if a rezone were granted to an administrative process, water is looked at later down the line, starting from a macro level at the concept plan level for a subdivision, and then at the preliminary plat level requiring, and if this were to be a small subdivision, preliminary and final plats would be combined in the same application. Water would be, would need to be verified at that point, Mr. Chair, and not tonight for a rezone application. For this reason, or for these reasons, staff disagrees with the finding from the planning commission and recommends approval of this request, of this application to the body tonight, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer questions. The applicant is in the audience tonight, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So I think just, first of all, do we, at this point in time, do we need to have the required frontage for, because there's 20 acres, 20.31 acres, they're asking for RR5. I guess, do we care that any of these future lots will have any kind of frontage, or are we taking the same thought process of, "Well, we're going to address it, we'll look at addressing it later"?
Um, that would be addressed later during the subdivision process, because they're required to provide frontage for any lot that they create. If they were to subdivide in the future, they would have to put in a street to meet the frontage requirements, and there's nothing that prohibits them from putting that in?
Well, sorry. Nothing that prohibits them from putting what in?
A street?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the concerns I'd have, we discussed it, and I'll just mention it, but if we are putting a street in, it depends on geographically and, you know, how that would work and how that would look, and I don't think any of us know how that'll work yet, or if it'll work. But my guess would be they'd figure out a way, so.
Yeah, that's true.
From a water perspective, I don't know about the other commissioners, I'm pretty sure we've all kind of looked and read at the notes, and from my perspective, um, I think that no matter where we put development in, there's a potential for wells to disturb adjacent wells. I've seen water issues where wells have been drilled 1,000 feet deep until they found water. So can you, can you spend a lot of money just to drill a deep well? Well, sure you can. And then I've also seen in that same scenario, a nearby ski resort, not in our county, but they also had two experts, 30-year experts, water experts, and they're both completely on different pages, 100%, 180 degrees. So you have an expert say, "This is going to have an effect on all these wells, and here's the great effect on the water." You can have another expert that's going to say, "It's not going to affect any of the wells," and who knows where the truth lies? But what we do know is there is a struggle for water, and I hear you that it'll be addressed later. I definitely think we need to knowingly what issues we think could be concerns, we definitely got to bring them up. I mean, that's, I don't think that's a bad thing to do.
Not only would it be-
I just, you know, I'm quite confident any resident that lives in this area would could come up and let us know the issues they've had. Anyway, those are my initial comments.
Not only would it be approved later on, it would be approved by the applicable water authority, um, the Weber Basin regarding water shares, the Weber Morgan Health regarding digging of a well, and ultimately supervised by the Division of Drinking Water, and none of those three entities being the county or planning staff.
Um, is it, is the intention for access to any future lots to be through this Hardscrabble Court drive?
Um, for a rezone, the applicant is not required to give us any information on what they're going to do with the property. Um, I will say that a private land can serve up to four lots. There's currently two being served by Hardscrabble Court.
I understand that. I just, I'll bring this up because it's public information. Hardscrabble Court is privately owned by a now-defunct entity and has not paid its taxes in many years. So that's a concern to me, that it's, I don't know who actually owns it. It's under a construction company name, and taxes haven't been paid in a very long time. So.
Is that limited just to the court?
Correct.
Right-of-way?
Yep, it's just the court right-of-way. So I don't know how that affects-
I wonder why it hasn't come up for tax, so.
It probably should have. Because it's been-
Up with right-of-way, I guess.
Leslie, how many years since they've paid their taxes? And the taxes are not much, we're talking $20, $30 a year. But I think it's been over a decade. But I think it's been over a decade since taxes have been paid on that road. So.
Is there any kind of, I mean, I don't know the answer to this. Is there any kind of maintenance agreement or anything recorded with respect to that?
I have no idea. Do you have any idea?
I would, uh, ask that the applicant address that.
Okay.
May I ask a question before that though?
Yeah.
Um, it says here, in response to the concerns, the staff conducted a site inspection of several well-maintained re-lons throughout this area. And then you're talking about the water usage for one acre of grass. That is all done by sprinkling secondary water. How come we're including that in drinking water?
First of all, the, uh, the water out there is, if it is a concern, um, it's just a good comparison of how much water it actually takes to water a lawn.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Sorry. Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, I'm Roger Eggit. This is my wife Jamie. We are the owners of the property. Uh, I do have a little bit of information for you. As the staff noted, that we're not asking for a subdivision at this time, we're asking for rezoning. There's quite a bit of difference between the two and the requirements of the two. We've spent the last 14 months with the county going through a subdivision process. It took that long mostly because of our part, but we spent 14 months. Um.
You're talking in a, in a different location, correct?
In Porterville, where we, we are moving to build a home in Porterville. And the reason that we'd like to get this rezoned, like many of the people here, we would like to have the opportunity to bring our children here. I'm not from Oregon, but I got here as quickly as I found out about it. My wife, on the other hand, her great-grandparents are Stotters. They settled this area. Her grandparents were born and raised here. They are buried here. Uh, her family has a long history here. And we would like the opportunity, if possible, to examine or pursue possibly subdividing to get another lot or two to allow our children to build on this property. Um, when we went through that process with the subdivision, we met with lots of people. We went, met with our surveyors, we met with our engineers, we met with geological engineers. We had to get a water right from the state of Utah. We had to get a contract from the Weber Basin District. We worked extensively with the health department. Health department came out and verified that we had flowing water. Then they tested the quality of that water. So that was all done during that subdivision process. And if we pursue a subdivision on this, we will be subject to those things at that time. Um, in the rezoning, as the staff mentioned, we looked up the rules for rezoning. And lot size, is it, is it conducive to the neighborhood? And so we did a little bit of research on hardscrabble. There are just over 40 addresses on hardscrabble. Thirteen of those lots on hardscrabble are less, are one acre or less. Five of those are less than two acres, three of those are less than four acres. Nine, nine of those lots are less than five to six acres. So a total of 30 of the 43 addresses on hardscrabble have five or less, five the same rezoning or the same zoning as we're requesting, or 70% of our neighbors already have this zoning. The second issue is utilities. We ran natural gas into our property. We have natural gas. We don't use propane. We're connected to the grids. We already have power and water. The health department has already looked at our property and it's conducive to maintaining a leach field and a septic system. I know the issue is water and I, I understand many of these people here are here to talk about water. I want to just go over a few things. The authority on water in the state of Utah is the, uh, well, I'm having a brain freeze. Uh, the Utah Geological Survey, they have done a hundred-page report on water in the Valley of Morgan. If you haven't read it, it's accessible from their website, the Utah Geological Society. They've, they've produced a map of water for the Morgan Valley. They've studied water throughout the entire state. That's their mandate. Water is in aquifers below our ground. There is a wa- aquifer below Morgan Valley and they've named it aptly Morgan Valley, the Morgan Valley Aquifer. My water on that lot is tapped into the Morgan Valley Aquifer. You can see that the Morgan Valley Aquifer comes barely up Hardscrabble. If you look at the map, it barely comes up Hardscrabble. The water I take from my well is the same water that's taken from the aquifer for this building, for the fourplex down the street, for the businesses in town. The aquifer starts right at Mountain Green. It goes up to just below East Canyon. There's an extension that does go up Hardscrabble and it goes up just past Weber Canyon here, just past Morgan. The key is tying into that aquifer. So, uh, the Utah Geological Survey stated there's two sources of water. Either you tap into an aquifer or you develop a well that's already tapped into that aquifer. In my business, I've developed two water systems. I own a business up in the UNAs. I have a well there that I drilled 30 years ago that produces almost identical to the well on this piece of property. We've developed a water system that provides 18 cabins, a store, a restaurant, a swimming pool and two hot tubs off that one well that produces the same amount of water as this well. Do I need to have people keep talking?
Yeah, if, if you can please just keep your comments till the public hearing, that'd be great.
Thank you. The key is that if we were to add a lot or two here, we could tie into our well, we could develop a water system. The key is with my neighbors who don't have water, let me tell you some of the things. The state of Utah, this is all online. The Meichels, Lance and Cindy Meichel dug their well 192 feet. They did not tap into the aquifer. Lance Mike, or, uh, Chris Meichel does not have a water right with the state of Utah. He spoke at the meeting against us. Daryl Meichel, 122 feet. Stan Meichel, 158 feet. Arnold Meichel, 245 feet. Cindy and Kent Carter, 200 feet. My well is drilled 333 feet and it tapped into the aquifer. If our neighbors don't have water, we have an opportunity as a neighborhood, let's develop a water system for them. It's done in many parts of this valley. There are little mini water systems. In a matter of months, we could develop a water system for those people on Hardscrabble who don't have water. We could tap into the aquifer. We could put in storage tanks. We could put in distribution systems. I've done it. I've done it for a property of 10 cabins and those cabins aren't all together. We could help those here who need water. It could be done. I just saw you approve hundreds of thousands of dollars for other things. We could raise our own money. We could help our neighborhood and help our neighbors have water. To answer your question about the maintenance agreement, that well, that piece of property that has defunct taxes, you're right, it should go to Taxcel. But on our plat for our property, it states, and this is recorded with the county and it was approved by the county, Hardscrabble Court is designed to provide a road right of way with width and construction designed to meet the minimum county standards as established for roads serving this development for residential use. Morgan County has approved this development with the condition that maintenance, repair, replacement and snow removal for the road with this development and the administration of such is equally a responsibility of the owners of these lots. My neighbor here and I share that easement. We are jointly responsible for maintaining that road. We're not responsible for its taxes, but as you mentioned, I looked those up, it was 270 dollars, I think, but we'd be happy to help with that as well. That's my pitch. I appreciate your time. I know I'm nervous and my voice is shaking, but I have had a major heart attack. So long as I keep standing, I'll be okay.
Questions for the applicant?
You're, the well that you mentioned, how, what's its production rate per minute?
I think we are six to 10 gallons a minute.
Thank you.
Our pump is, I, our pump is in that range.
Additional questions, can I share? Um, you did mention water system. I'll just make mention that the county does not currently own or, or operate any water infrastructure at all. Um, we've, we've kept out of the water business on purpose, so all the water systems in the county are privately held.
But we could do that as a.
Yes, you could as a, as a private company, absolutely, yeah. I'm just, I'm just making the point that the county would not necessarily be participating in creating a water system.
Well, there might be state grants or federal grants, or we pool our resources and get these guys water.
Sure.
Cause water's there if you tap into the aquifer. And the report done by the Utah Geological Society is an outstanding report.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. With that, we will look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing regarding item number eight.
So move.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now in public hearing. I'll just ask you, if you do come forward, please state your name for the record. We'd ask you to please keep your comments to, to, uh, three minutes or less, if you can. Um, and please, let's, let's keep it civil. Thank you.
Cindy Carter, Hardscrabble. And we just got some new pavement at the top of the road there. I think I thank you guys for that. Um, first, I would like to correct Mr. Eggit. Um, I'm not real sure where he's getting his information, but Kent and Cindy Carter's well is 820 feet deep. Kent and Cindy Carter are also licensed well drillers, even though that's not what we do for a living. We drill cathodic wells. We have to have a license to do those, just like a water well. And, um, just like Jared brought up, you can drill a hole right here and go 10 feet over and something different. It's, it's, they can look at those aquifers, but you being able to get to them, the depth of them from where you're at, that's, it's all, there is, it's, there's no guarantee right now in the way the process is. Um, I would like you to know that we do have, we also have a well, Kent and I, or excuse me, a spring. Kent and I own what the family calls the Red Hill Spring, that happens to be one of the oldest recorded water rights in the state. We're kind of proud of that. That Red Hill Spring has run Kent's lifetime and Kent's father's lifetime always. Rigby Construction, who is who built this subdivision, drilled that well in 2007 and in 2008, in December, in November, our Red Hill Spring stopped running. And it has done ever since that happened. Um, even last year, when we had a great water year, it still stopped in, in November. Um, a few years in the bad drought, it has stopped in July. And one year, I believe five or six years ago, it didn't run at all. Um, we have a big, um, holding tank that, that we store water in and it's just Kent and I there. And so we, we can usually, um, make our water go, but we did drill a well because we have the ability to do so. Um, just to make up for those problems. So we do have recorded issues with this subdivision being down here. Um, and I don't know if you guys understand that, but what we would have to do is go to the state and basically sue them. And I don't want to have to do that, but, but that is an option, um, because we do have some very good recorded um, findings and, and proof of what's happened up there. I would also like to point out that on his map, you're showing, or Josh and them are showing that there's five acres adjacent and it's, it's adjacent to that road that nobody's paid taxes on, but the largest portion of his property is adjacent to me and the other uh, largest portion is adjacent to Hanson's and those are both sown A20. And I just don't think it's really wise for the county to start issuing blanket rezones because they have to come in and do a, uh, subdivision and it'll probably get denied then. It's still going to be zoned as RR5 and then using the reason because a neighbor is zoned that, then we might as well just zone everything high density. Go all the way down to Mountain Green and move it all up this way because that's how the neighbor is. Um, he's also, when you're talking, I know you guys said something about secondary water, but Roger Eggit is not allowed to use the West Porterville ditch on most, a big portion of his property. The rules of that ditch is that you are not allowed to water above the old ditch and a bunch of this property is. That I can show you on that map too where that is, if you would like to see that. Um, I'm also a little bit concerned and I don't know if there's any kind of regulations, but Wilkinson's have an airport there now that is now a registered FAA airport that I know Egits have complained about because they take right off, the runway is right over this piece of property. And I don't know if that needs to be considered, um, when you're rezoning. Obviously we see Ogden fighting all these, these problems of having an airport there with all the density around the airport. So I just ask that that's looked at and then again, the road is a concern. Um, and I think that's all I have. And I would like to also thank you guys for the homestead thing. My little 92-year-old mother-in-law, Ludeen, that has been here her whole entire life would, will definitely benefit. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Hanson. I'm just to the north of Egits. It's a great idea to split up the property like that, uh, but, um, and I don't really care for as long as it's his property, but in some ways I have three concerns. Four years ago, my daughter-in-law, she came to the county wanting to build a house and was totally discouraged to even apply because it would never happen. Now they moved somewhere else and I'm very sorry about that. Uh, that's one concern. Second concern is the road. It's in a very deplorable state and, uh, we haven't discussed how to keep it up. Uh, we don't know who or so far what to do, who owns it, who to approach this problem because it is a problem. Uh, it's not maintained. It's in a terrible state. Um, I have good waters, uh, just, uh, maybe 25, 30 yards from Eggit's property. Uh, comparatively I've got water, but I've run dry as well. And I have, uh, some good neighbors coming up to my well asking for water. Which of course I, I give them because as far as uh, I know, I haven't, it takes August, September before mine runs dry. But it is a concern. I don't know how it's going to be solved, but this is going to affect me. And then it's not only a question for Egits anymore, it's a question for me too. Same thing with the road. I don't know what to do about it. We can't do anything of this kind before we have settled the use of the road. So, um, as I said, I'm sure he's entitled to, to split up his, uh, lot the way he wants. Uh, I moved up there 15 years ago because of the fact that it was not divided into lots. And I enjoyed the view. I enjoyed living there. But again, that is, he's entitled to, to care about his own property. I have these three concerns. My son and daughter-in-law, they and their family, they could have lived up there now, but they were totally discouraged, uh, from even applying or starting this because it would never happen. And I'm sorry about that. We have the road and we have the lack of water. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Stan Meichel. I live just across from the Egits on the other side of the road where the water's a little bit more, less gallons a minute, um, to survive on it. the water's a little bit more, less gallons a minute, um, to survive on it. My, my concern is, I apologize because I wasn't at the meeting before, so I really didn't know what was going on, but I'd talked to Roger, told me he'd like to have his family up there, and who wouldn't want their family close to him? My only concern with that area is, is the houses that were built on the hill over there, because Goldfleck owned that property, if those that can remember, it's as old as I am, but, but they had that property over there, and they tried to put a subdivision in several times. Delmar White told me several times he owned that ground right in there by them, that that's a, it was a flood plain, and if anybody's ever been up there, you guys probably got a taste of it this year down Hartscrabble Road, since they put the pipeline, and the ditch isn't there no more to catch a lot of that water. Probably eighty, ninety percent of that water comes out of that draw right there. So my concern is, is there enough higher ground for them to put three houses? If they're ever there close by them, but if you want them close by you, I, I don't understand buying some more property somewhere else with a lot of acres and having your house up there and having your kids clear over here, but, um, just my concern is if they've looked at that for a flood plain. Thank you.
I'm Sid, Mike told, I'll say it's Sydney, but, you know, Sydney, so, like, oh, Sid. Um, I noticed my well wasn't brought up. Sorry, I'm nervous, I've never spoke like this.
Nothing to be nervous about.
For a two-eighty. I get three gallons a minute, and I raised my family there, and I pick my laundry. Two dishes, we go dry. This subdivision was built way before some of those other houses, it was approved. And if anything shows us why it shouldn't have been, or the lack of water we have, yeah, we're one acre, three acre, four acre, there's no water. So, that's already been approved, it's done, it's over, but that should be an example of why we shouldn't keep putting stuff up there, because no one should have to say, "Oh, I'm headed to the laundromat today because I don't have any water to put my laundry." No one should have to say, "Do you use your dishwasher?" No, because there's much water in my sink, and I wash it and as I rinse them, I can fill the sink more. We have watched our water running. And if you go up and look at my front yard, it's not grass, it's rock. Because we could never grow any grass, because we have those shares in this, this secondary. But you know what happens when we're taught? Think about what happens on those dry years. We don't even get any water from the secondary. So I don't get water from my secondary, I don't get water from my well, so why would we put more up there? That's what I don't understand, we already know there are issues. And I understand it's your property, and you want to do stuff with it, but I want my kids to live in there too. And I've watched my property taxes go from minimal to these great big huge homes being built up there, and you don't like kids aren't going to be able to live up there. My kids aren't going to be able to live and work, and the Mikesels have been in this county for how many years? So it'd be great if we all had the money that we could keep our ground, and all of our kids could live up here, and we could all join in on this one big well and pay a person so we could use their water. But it's not feasible for all of us. So I just want you to know that I have struggled, I have lived there for twenty-three years, and struggled and raised a family on the bare minimum of water, and the thought of more going up there and somebody hitting that well again terrifies me. And yes, I do have a house going in next to me right now, but the lot's been approved for thirty, forty years. She can't even build, get water on her own property, she's on a family member's property, she can't even try and find water, she had all this special stuff. So I just ask that you take that into consideration, that my well was not considered a two-eighty and three gallons a minute. So, I think that's all I've said.
Thank you.
My name's Arnold Mikesel, I live up on Hartscrabble Road too. I was born and raised on Hartscrabble. Grew up with limited water, and have hardly a lot of water when I was a kid. I didn't even think I'd be moving up there and trying to drill my own well, it was, it's a big gamble, obviously. Uh, it's a crapshoot to hit water. Uh, so, there's been a few of us up here that's been packing water, and I cross my fingers every time my well turns on that it's going to pump up and give us water. Uh, my cousin tried to drill a well, didn't hit, spent about twenty to thirty thousand dollars on a dry hole. There's, it's, it's not a lot of water up there. But if you, uh, was to pass this, there's many, many people on Hartscrabble Road that has big enough property to subdivide theirs too, into one-acre lots or whatever. You got the Fairbanks, Beckers, Greens, Robinsons, Steve, Stevens, Burwells, Carters, Martins, Allens, Hanks, Brashires, the Mikesels, Hanson's, Flickingers, Everlees, Wilkinson's, Sidwell, and it just goes on and on and on. So if we go ahead and approve this, then what's going to stop all these people to do the same thing? And they're going to have the same crapshoot of hitting water between two hundred to nine hundred feet. Nine hundred feet, that's a lot of money. One of our neighbors already just done it, and he put a lot of money into a well. So if you could, just consider that. It'd be nice to have a water coming from wherever, that you're going to put a big tank and share it with everybody. But when they subdivide for all these people, even if you have one of them, you ain't going to have enough water. So, I just thought maybe you could think about that. Thank you.
Randy Elliott, I'm a part-time resident, I'll be a full-time resident come January sixth, construction day. I give up my full-time job on the other side of the mountain. But speaking of, you know, of properties and zoning, and I'm going to speak against staff here for a little bit. Sometimes commissioners have to take a hard stance and say, "Staff, just because it's zoned that way next to you doesn't mean that it has to be that way going forward." In Davis County, where I happen to be a county commissioner, when I first took up office, we had a sub-family come to us and said, "We want to develop this for a family out in unincorporated area," and so we allowed it, one or two acres, lot subdivisions, couple acre lots. And they came to us and said, "We want to put a forty-acre lot subdivision in." And it just expanded, and we said, "No," because we didn't know what would, the repercussions would be. So we changed our zoning in Davis County unincorporated from A1, A5, to A10, so that we could do a study on septic systems. We found in Davis County unincorporated area, that one septic system can be handled on ten acres, after doing an extensive study of four years of doing all the tests. You can go up there and perk and all do what you want, and say that, "Oh, that perks, it can, it can handle septic system." But I would recommend the county go out and do a real study and say, "Okay, what can this actually handle? What is Morgan County actually can handle per acre for septic?" The second thing is, the house that I purchased, we're on our second well. The first well did dry up at two hundred feet. They're now down to four hundred plus feet and getting some water, and we had to put a, a cistern in to be able to collect that water. And so my word of caution is to the county is that as you're growing up, you're going to have to make those hard decisions and say, "Look, we got to look forward to the future. If we're going to grow up, we're going to have to put sewer systems in, we're going to have to put water systems in." And to say, "Well, the neighbors got this lot, or this lot, or that lot," and you keep allowing them, it just keeps expanding. That's my one, I think I kept to three minutes. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Randy.
I'm Cindy McKee, and I live on Hartscrumble as well, just, um, east of the Egits, I've never met them, but, um, I'm not meaning to beat a dead horse, but, uh, I live in a hundred and sixteen-year-old house that's crumbling and falling apart, and I don't have the luxury of being able to move to someplace else, fixed income, to even repair my home to, to livable standards, basically. Don't send anybody to check my house, I don't want to be kicked out of my house, I can't afford it, but I have to stay put. But, um, my pump's still running, or my, my well's still pumping, and thank God it is, but if something were to happen, if more houses are built and the water's taken away, and it stops, I don't have the option, I don't have the luxury of moving, and I wouldn't, I would just think that I was raised to consider my neighbors, to consider other people and what they, how they live, and how, and help them if I can, um, and it just, I guess, I, I just feel it's kind of, the complacency is reprehensible, that there's no complacency or consideration for the people that are already there. He gets to move on and, and leave us behind to, to struggle, and, anyway, that's what I'm saying. And then the homesteading thing, yes, thank you, I run the food pantry, I've seen a lot of elderly people come in, and it's really humbling for them, they're, and this will be an, an ease, I hope, that they won't have to struggle so much anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. A separate note on the homestead item. If you'll come over and visit with our clerk's office, they can give you some more information on that, maybe you could help hand that out to some of the folks you think could use it. Okay, any other comment?
Hello, Richard Mikesel, I live across the street from Egits.
And I'm Becky Mikesel, my mom.
I grew up there. Grew up there my whole life. I did move down to the city for a little while, but I just moved back up to my grandparents' house. And the well's not good there. And we just actually put a hundred and sixty-gallon tank downstairs, and we have to take showers like trailers, we have to turn it on and off. And we have to watch what we use laundry, sometimes we have to go to the laundromat as well. And yeah, if, you know, we're struggling now and fifty thousand dollars for another well, that's, that's a lot of money. And, I don't know if you can pull that map back up, but those other, wait, those other houses, they're on those five acres. If you happen to drive up there, they're actually up on the hill. And that is kind of a flood zone, I do have a video of all the water coming up out of there. So, somebody who builds there, it's, you know, I don't know, I think the Egits did have a flood in their basement, so that would be something to think about for future, if there is more homes. You know, spend a lot of money like that, and you have your basement flooding all the time, because you built into a flood zone and didn't know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Mikesel, uh, as my wife alluded to earlier, we've got well problems. I just want to add to what she said. For twenty-some-odd years that we've had that well there, it has produced less and less and less with every well that's gone in. When my cousin Arnold did next to us and did his well, I produced less. The list goes on and on, it's, we, when we first moved in there, we didn't haul water. Every year, we've hauled more. Three years ago, I was hauling water two times a year. The last three years, two years, I haul water four times a year. I have a thousand-gallon tank that I fill up. We, I guarantee are more conservative with our water than anybody else around, I guarantee you that. And it's empty four times a year. Another well, another two, three wells over there, I don't know what it's going to do. My sister, who is trying to get a house built next to us right now, she just drilled three hundred and I think it was seventy feet, nothing. Moving, starting another well, no guarantees. Whatever his ideas are with this depth that you're going to hit water is out of this world, there's no truth to that whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Alan Flato. I moved up to, uh, Morgan four years ago. And like I said last time, I'm due diligence, because I've never bought a house where it didn't have water. And I got a nice house, it's kind of just, uh, Egits. Up on the hill, it was a preacher's house, and he didn't do a real good disclosure on water. And as far as conservative, I get maybe a hundred gallons a day. So I do have a big sister. And nobody's more conservative on water than me. And going back to due diligence, I don't know when they named Hartscrabble. Hartscrabble means being or relating to a place of barren or barely arable soil. Somebody knew it way back when. And my well is eight hundred and fifty feet. I am not going to build another one, because I'd get zero. So, and I'm one of the people that can't be on the right side of the canal, so I get more irrigation water, because I'm on the wrong side of the road. So everything I did about buying that house, other than moving to Morgan, Southern Morgan, it's undoubtedly beautiful, but it's a hard living. Spend that much money for a house that should be demolished. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no additional comment? Okay.
Aaron Vens, I live up part of the well also.
Sorry, what was, what was the last name, can you spell it?
Vens.
Vens. No, it's that one.
Anyway, I do live up Hartscrabble. As far as the zoning, the zoning's been there for a long time. And that's the reason why the houses have the frontage, and why they're zoned one acre, five acre, whatever the case may be. And there's a reason they zoned it, right? They didn't zone it just because it was convenient. They zoned it because it's what the valley could handle, what the properties could handle up in that area. Where the infrastructure, we haven't done, right? We're lucky we got gas up there, which is great. We'll never see sewer in my life, we'll never see culinary water, and none of that stuff. I do have a green lawn, I'm sorry, but, uh, and a garden. But, uh, I do have water, and I-
Nice garden.
Thank you. And I'm very fortunate, right? These guys here, I see hauling the water, and I know what time of year it is, and, and yeah, we all have sympathy for them. We can't go on doing what we're doing if we keep developing in places we shouldn't have to go. And that's kind of, you know, we all heard the water stories, and we don't have to go on about that. But it was zoned for a reason, and it's not made to take lightly or rezone just because you want to have somebody else moving there. We all understand that's not always the case. You might have to go somewhere else. So, anyway, I'd ask you to look at the zoning. Why change it now? There are no infrastructures, you support the idea. And as far as, you know, thousand-foot wells, I'm sorry, there are not a lot of people that can afford thousand-foot wells in the area you live in now. If you want to chase all those people out of there that can't afford a well, then that's what would happen. The Mikesels would be moving. If I dried up, I can't afford a thousand-foot well. And nor do I want to pay somebody else to put a tank up there, filled full of water, so I can drink it, because they wanted more housing. We want to develop more. Don't want to see that. Barclay Earl lives around the corner, and they have a community well. And it dries up also. So, the community well is not always the answer. And again, it's a burden on everybody. That's it.
Thank you.
Lance Mikesel. Aaron kind of beat me to the punch, I don't want to beat the dead horse of water, we've, we've heard plenty of that, but I would just echo Aaron's thoughts of, right, this was, this zoning was set at some point by, by a county commission before, and by a planning committee, that this is what the area should, should hold. Some of these, um, right, areas in our county don't need to be developed and have high density, don't need to be, uh, even five acres, right? I think it's, as we talk about and go along all the lots down there, I think most, all of the lots have frontage, right? I'm, I'm sitting here on a one-acre lot, objecting to somebody having five acres, but I have the frontage. And that, when that was, our property was subdivided, it was because it, all the property had frontage. I believe if you go on down the road, those five-acre lots, I would guess probably all have frontage. So like others have said, we start allowing these that are, that are zoned A20 to start splitting up, right? That's a whole bunch of houses up Hartscrabble. There are some up there that, some neighbors up there that they come in, I don't know that I could come in and object, because I could look and say, "Oh, they've got their frontage," right? I don't know that I can object to that, but all, when we start getting to all the properties that don't have frontage, and we start allowing them to develop, just because- just because something is sitting next to it, um, is gonna continue to get us further and further, uh, down the road of, of way too many houses, way too many people and not the infrastructure or the ability to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going once, twice, okay, all right. Uh, seeing no additional public comment, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are now back in public meeting and we are on item number eight. Discussion decision, rezone, application. Okay, commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just know the problem.
Well, I, I got a question. Do you care, Commissioner Fackler, if I go?
I'm done.
I, I guess in the experience I've had, I, my understanding also as an entity is that we're supposed to, I don't know if insure is the right word, I gotta be careful lately, that water and sewer, the two basic needs are available. And I know that they go through different, different entities. There might be culinary water systems or districts or Weaver Basin or, or Weaver Morgan Health Department, but we still have, I believe, the responsibility to at least say, um, yes, that we're aware of, there's availability of water and sewer. And, um, I don't know of any other place like this in, in the county. I have read the report and it is a very good report and there's a lot of water in the valley. I don't know of any other location in the county that's like Hart Scrabble. I mean, it's not even, we, we can't even, it's not, we're comparing apples and oranges to any other that I've seen anyways. So, I don't know how in my right mind and conscious I can say, I, I think the water will be fine, man. I'd, I mean, I could go off. I could say, okay, sure, uh, drill a well eight hundred feet. You need to look at every single well in the neighborhood. You gotta be monitoring that for the next three years and see if it has an effect on it while you're pulling well. I mean, there's so many different variables, um, and I guess it's changing into a comment. I appreciate the comment that Cindy made. It took a half a second to pull up the wells in the area, just Utah, the state of Utah wells and Wendy's, or sorry, Cindy's wells at eight hundred and twenty. So, let's just make sure, well, the, the smaller size radius well goes all the way down to eight twenty. The, the bigger size nine and seven inches is two hundred. So, but we just gotta be correct in how we're explaining things, that helps. But anyways, um, I, I guess I'm looking at you Garrett and I don't know if you know the answer, but I guess I have a huge concern that we're knowing the issues that exist like this and not, I don't know. I feel like I, yeah, I, I'm just concerned, very concerned. I don't know if you have any comments?
I, I do and, and Josh can correct me if I'm wrong because he reads the code, this, the subdivision code very thoroughly. But as far as the subdivision process, although the Division of Drinking Water regulates the water systems, the county requires will serve letters. And so there is some checking that is done by the county. We also defer to Weaver Morgan Health Department for the septic analysis. But it's still required by our code to have that happen. And, and I think that it's probably a good thing to just remember that for a legislative decision, although you can't require applicants to answer your questions, I think when you ask those questions, it's giving you more information to inform your decision. And, and so I, I'm not gonna say, don't ask questions. I think you can ask those questions and then if they don't want to answer, you can respectfully move on. If they do answer, that may inform how you, how you decide. But for the legislative process, you have that ability to, to take all the comments in. It, it is not similar to the administrative where you check the boxes and if they check the boxes, you have to approve. You have the ability to listen to public comment. I mean, you can listen on administrative items, but it, it shouldn't sway you away from approving something that does check the boxes. So I think that that distinction is good to remember.
I think Commissioner Anderson, you hit the nail on the head as far as my thoughts on this. Um, and, and Mr. Smith made a good comment that I, I think is of concern to me. You know, we could say, well, water's gonna be discussed at a later point when they get to the subdivision process and not worry about it now. And, and that's fine, except for the fact that it is administrative in nature when they get to the subdivision process. And, and I'm concerned that, um, you know, who's to say that the due diligence will be done at that point, so.
Although you're not required to look at water at this point, you're not prohibited from considering it at this point. That's the point I wanted to make.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Our planning commission heard all this and they're more experts on land use than we are. If they had a negative recommendation to us as a legislative board, why would we go against it?
I'm not, I'm not saying we should go against it in this situation, so don't get me wrong.
Okay.
But there have been situations where we have, um, maybe taken a different approach than the planning commission. And, and in this case, we have two different recommendations. We have a recommendation from staff that we should approve and a recommendation from the planning commission that we shouldn't. In the past, we've had the same type of thing and I think we've made those decisions to the best of our ability. Sometimes legislative decisions come down to more than just expert in land use too. You know, sometimes there's other factors that I think we need to consider, so. I, I don't know if that answered your thought that.
That's good.
And I don't know if that question was even directed to, to us or not, but.
It was just directed towards you guys. I know, Mike, you've been on the planning commission before and so, so you know the codes a lot more. I know staff has recommended it. Planning commission didn't, sure, they're newer, but I, um, I know in the past we have gone and did against the planning commission. And the repercussions that came are not always good. And not saying I'm afraid, because I'm not. I do know the water situation up in Porterville. I am one of the lucky people. I only had to go down seventy feet, but then I had to go a hundred and eighteen to get my water and I've got forty-five gallons a minute. So, I'm one of the lucky people. But my dad has one gallon a minute. And so, and I understand where you guys are coming from. I've got neighbors on the thirty, Highway sixty-six side that they had to go back in and drill a new well to be able to get water. I had another neighbor that had to go over six hundred feet to get his. And then when he did get it, it's just like mine, where you've got iron in it. So if you want to wash your clothes in iron, I can tell you what they turn out to be like. It's brown. And, uh, so it's not fun. So we have to come down to Morgan here to get the good water down here and, and wash our whites. So I'm just saying that I know the problem. And, uh, it's not fun. And I don't want to have a water system up in Porterville because then that enhances, uh, infrastruc, I mean, that, then, this is just personally, not as your commissioner, but personally, I would like to not have, I don't want to have an infrastructure of water up there, a water system up there, just because I don't think the people in that area want more growth. Even though they want their kids to come back, they want their kids to come back, they want them to live right next to us. Uh, we still have the water problem. And, uh, I mean, we passed a, a code a while ago that had to talk about, it was about, um, detached accessory dwelling units. If you're wanting something for your kids, then put in a detached accessory dwelling unit so that way we can end up having, um, your kids there. And that's only takes up one, but I'll have to work on another one later. So anyway, that's just my, my thoughts.
Commissioner Fackler, I'm glad that you brought up, um, the recommendations of, of either staff or planning commission. I just think we should point out that regardless of, of which direction the commission goes, I don't think that that means that we don't trust the judgment of either entity, either group. I think both are doing their best to, to do their job and I appreciate that. I appreciate that staff is trying their hardest to, to help our residents accomplish what they want to do with their, with their property. I think that's commendable. We've had in the past staff that doesn't, doesn't try to do that and I think that's not a good thing. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the planning commission trying to, you know, do their best to, to navigate a tough situation. So anyway, I just wanted to make the point that regardless of, of how the commission votes, I think we still have full trust and respect for, for our staff and our commission.
That is correct.
Commissioners, any other thoughts, comments?
No, I, I have a comment that I think that it's also our responsibility to protect our citizens. That's, that's one of our responsibilities as a commission is to protect those citizens and the, the things that they need. And, and we need to look at all those things, so.
Sometimes it's not a fun line to walk.
Nope.
Okay. With that, I'll look for a motion then if there are no, no more comments.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If an applicant were to drill a well, your relative production level is low from my experience. Frankly, so is yours.
I know it is.
Ours are typically, I'm looking at wells that are serving public systems and so they have much higher gallons per minute. You know, I grew up in the desert of southern Nevada. We lived on a well and even there, I don't think we ever ran dry. And, um, but if, if an applicant were to come in and say, we've drilled a well and we have a high producing well, is that going to make the difference for purposes of a zoning application? I know it certainly would in terms of an application for subdivision because they would be able to, in fact, to check the box. They would have a well that produced sufficient water supply for that subdivision. And, you know, there, I, I think it's, I'm surprised about the lack of water in that area, but that's just because I was uninformed with respect to it before. And I think it is a legitimate concern, but it's like Cindy Carter pointed out, you can drill a well and hit pay dirt and, or pay water. Or you can move over ten feet and miss. And, and I've not seen it that close, but I've certainly seen it within the distance that I used to be able to throw a baseball, where one drill, well is, you know, pumping at six hundred gallons per minute and the other well, you know, they got like thirteen gallons per minute. And so, you know, it, and, and that's a, a baseball throw. So, I, I mean, I'm kind of persuaded that there's a, there is a significant problem here and it's probably advisable to work on the solution to the problem before we advance rezones that will make it more difficult. But if somebody were willing to work on the problem and came up with a solution, then I would hope we'd be willing to listen to that. Because frankly, it could be a solution for the whole community. People may not like it, they may not want to participate in it. They may, you may ultimately say, no, it's a, that's, that's facilitating the concurrency requirements and allowing somebody to come in and divide, you know, subdivide this area and develop it more. But frankly, having to truck in water is a problem, you know, that I've only experienced in like remote cabin areas and, and so forth. So, I, I mean, I'm an advocate for protecting the public water systems that have been developed in the county and, and I hope we can continue to do that. And if there was a good solution in terms of providing water through a well that produced significant quantities and the building of a tank, that would be certainly something that I would want to look to and that would help the development of an area, but it would also significantly improve the quality of life for some of the people in the area. So.
I agree. I think that's a great comment. Okay. Any other, right? If not, we'll look for a motion on item number eight.
I will make a motion that we deny the Egger rezone application number twenty-four point oh four nine, changing twenty-one point three one acres from A twenty to RR one to RR five completely and amend the future land use map from a split designation of agriculture and rural residential one to ranch residential five completely due to the following findings. And those things would be that we have discussed here this evening.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all those in favor of the motion?
So a question on the motion.
Oh, sorry.
So, can you just at least, just a couple of the specific findings that you're making?
Lack, lack of, lack of water would be it, one of them. Safety for the roads would be another one.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Your second still stands, I guess, we're not really changing the motion, just clarifying. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, we will move on to action item number nine. I'll ask if you are planning on leaving the meeting, if you'll just do so quietly and, thank you. And if you'd like an evening of enjoyment, feel free to stick around. Cindy Meixel, I'm looking at you. She gets enough enjoyment in the county building here. Okay.
So our USIP conference is coming up. They've requested to know who our appointed representative is going to be. I did send this out to all of the elected officials, um, as it can be any county elected. I heard back only from a very begrudgingly county attorney that should there be no other volunteers, they might be able to make that work. That's all I have. I just need to report to them.
Remind me the date of that.
It is November twenty-second.
We had, we had gone and approved.
That's right.
A few weeks ago and I don't know that you were here.
Yeah, I thought we agreed that Matt was gonna do it.
Matt was gonna do that.
Oh, was that when I wasn't here?
I thought that was for USAC, but maybe it is.
No, that's for the USIP.
So who's our alternate?
Really glad this isn't a public meeting.
We didn't, we did not choose an alternate.
Yeah, we didn't select.
I had, I had said I would do it.
He was gonna go as well.
Yeah, that was only if.
I was like, I've literally missed two meetings all year. How is this possible?
Why don't we, we'll just keep Matt as the.
Matt and Blaine is our alternate?
Blaine's going anyway, you said.
No, I may not be.
Oh, okay.
I just, I just have to put it in resolution so that I can submit it to them because they require it.
You can put, you can put a, you can put another alternate in there if you'd like.
All right, it's not mine.
Yeah, we had already.
Okay, so Matt Wilson. Why is it doing this to me?
I agree too.
I think that was mischaracterized. I don't think it was begrudgingly. I just said that I could make that work if needed.
That is a great clarification.
Sorry. Adding words.
People interpret your tone in so many unfavorable ways.
Yeah, I should have.
Think it could help though, I am telling you. All right, so I'm sorry, who's our alternate? The begrudgingly county attorney or Blaine? Okay. Garrett of the Smiths, the honorable.
Yes.
Okay, just kidding. All right. Okay, I will submit that in. So then you're, um, it's technically, it has to be done by resolution, so resolution twenty-four eighty-two.
You want us to vote on that resolution then? So we need a motion to approve resolution CR twenty-four dash eighty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and we had two seconds.
He could do it.
Sure.
Matt Wilson.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Let me finish checking this and I'll put it on mine.
Okay. Kate, I'll take your first one because I'm aware of this one.
Yay, I'm not sad about that.
Lost that integrated waste is having their fortieth anniversary, um, this fall. They are doing an open house in conjunction with that on November fifteenth from noon to four P M. They will have a taco truck there, so if that entices you. And also tours available of the material recovery facility. So if you'd like to see how the recycled materials get sorted and handled, you can go down and check that out.
What time is that at?
Uh, it's from noon to four P M.
When is that?
I think I put a flyer in the packet.
There is.
Let me.
It's, it's in front of you.
Good grief.
Noon to four.
Noon to three, tours are noon to four.
I say, hopefully we'll be in the state football game for this high school at that point.
That would be awesome.
Is that that day?
Normally that is that day.
Good.
Uh, you good for that? Next one? Okay, so there are UAC dues, um, were reassessed. They didn't go up too mu- didn't go up too much. Yeah, so there are thirty thousand seven eighty. We obviously don't pay this until the first of the year next year, but I just, so I can budget it. Are we good with that amount?
So, we sold it anyway.
Okay. And then we had discussed this next one partially at the very, very end of a work session way back in May, but it wasn't an action item. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm completely on the other thing. This is the amicus brief.
Yeah.
We had discussed, or you had discussed last meeting, to enter into the amicus brief rather than create our own, correct? I just need to know what fund you want to pay that out of.
What was that dollar amount to?
One thousand.
It was a one thousand dollars, just a thousand.
Jeremy, can you go one more page? Thank you.
I thought we got rid of all those.
What?
The non-departmental.
Only you guys have.
Only we have that.
Oh, we still have ours.
That's our piggy bank that we spend out of, because we don't want to put everything in.
We don't want to have a category for everything.
Yeah.
Slash fund.
No, we don't call them slash funds.
The problem is we just have so many, such a variety of items that come through that we couldn't have anticipated, so...
And this is a new thing. This was not, this was not clear back. This was only a month ago.
Right. I was thinking, we had talked about being members of the American Public Lands Council.
Yes, and that one we do every year, and it's coming up in January again.
Okay.
So, this one is to go along with the, it's with the Utah lands, not Utah, no, there's two of them.
The American lands. That's what I'm trying to get mixed up.
So, this is a donation to help with the amicus brief?
Yes. And then there's also is the Utah Public Lands Council.
And that's the one Beaver County Commissioner is over?
No, that's the one that Tammy Pearson from Beaver County, yes.
That's Beaver County, yeah.
That's Beaver County. And then there is the American Lands Council, which is a Utah organization.
Okay.
And that one is five thousand that comes in in January.
But we didn't agree on the Tammy Pearson one?
That's a thousand that we had, that we put in.
I don't think we put it in the budget.
We need to put it, I think-
That's what I'm saying. We talked about it in a work session, but we never actioned it.
That's right. We need to have an adjustment.
Okay, so that's...
That's seven thousand dollars.
By me, which one Tam, it's like, to me, it's just Tammy Pearson.
Tammy's is Utah Public Lands Council.
Thank you. Public Lands Council. And then the five K is?
The American Lands Council.
American Lands Council. Okay, American Lands Council.
And the amicus brief-
Amicus brief is gonna come out of non-departmental.
Is to help the UAC get amicus briefs.
And you're good with non-departmental for that one?
Do you want more information on this? Commissioner McConnell did send it to me, I think, last meeting, and I forwarded it to Janet, and we've had a few discussions. I can let you know what we talked about, or, but we're generally in support.
Sure, that sounds good. I, whatever.
So, the idea would be, well, so, just pulling up some land records, the federal government owns just over twenty-seven percent of the entire United States, but it is disproportionate to the eleven western states, and they own forty-nine and a half percent of the eleven western states. And so, it kind of, throughout the history, there was this idea that under, so the Constitution, Article Four, Section Three, Clause Two, talks about when territories come into the United States, they come on equal footing. However, after the Louisiana Purchase, they stopped, like, just sending the land to the states. And so then the states had to buy it, and then they would sell it, and that would, I guess, compensate for the Louisiana Purchase. They had that policy for quite a while, but then with the eleven western states, for whatever reason, the federal government continued to maintain the land instead of distribute it. And I think that it would probably go back to, there's Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen, that talks about how the, like, Washington, D.C., is the seat of government for the entire United States, and it should only be ten by ten square miles, and that any other federal land has to be used for forts, arsenals, docks, ports, kind of for that foreign commerce and/or border protection, you know, national defense, and only with the consent of the states. And so, there is somewhat of a constitutional issue as well, and the idea would be to turn the federal government back to the states. And the state did pass, I can't remember what bill it was, but they created the DLM, which is the Division of Land Management, which is basically like the BLM for the state. Janet brought up some good thoughts, too, that the way it's done could matter because sometime, so coming from Montana and seeing how the BLM works out there, it would disrupt people's ability to hunt, fish, and do some of those things. And so, I guess we won't know exactly how it will be managed. This is step one, to see if it can come back to the states and then move forward under new management. So, that's a little bit of background. And I think generally, though, it would be more in line constitutionally to not have the federal government own land that's not being used for those items that are articulated in the Constitution, especially without consent of the state, which is also a requirement.
Are we the highest public owned by the federal government, state in the West?
No. But we're pretty high. I think it's maybe sixty-five percent, but there's some landlocked that could be up to eighty percent, right, you know, where it's just like you have to go through public lands to get to some of that private land. I don't know which one is the most. I think Nevada is super high. Arizona's, yeah. Yeah, the eleven western states are, Alaska used to be even more, but it used to be the highest, but I don't think it is anymore.
All right.
But about half of all the eleven western states is owned by the federal government.
Google says Nevada.
I see. My gut was right.
Google said Nevada. Eighty-point-one percent.
Yeah.
We're at seventy-eight.
I think we're at sixty-five to sixty-eight somewhere in there.
Are we asking Google?
I'm asking.
Ask Google.
How much is Utah?
Utah is federal land. Sixty-six-point-four-eight.
See, yes.
Okay, decreased. They must've got rid of some.
Okay.
Look at us.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All righty, my next one is, it is-
So, we are to proceed with that one, right?
Yeah. My next one is on the Young Street Bridge payment per Resolution CR twenty-three-thirteen that's coming out of Fund Thirty-One. Did you want anything actioned in that, or do you want me to just carry on with the resolution? You want me to just submit for payment when we get it, since it's?
I think, I think we were gonna discuss that in our budget sessions tomorrow to finalize that, because I think we were gonna take it out of that mat, that cog.
Yeah, it's the resolution-
Which is the Thirty-One Fund, right?
Is it?
Uh-huh. Says that it, the cog has reviewed the county options, sales and use tax for transportation recommends the funds collected by the county be used on behalf of the cog to pay back an amount of up to one-point-five-four-one-two-nine-seven-point-two-three million to the city for the development and construction of the Young Street Bridges outlined in Exhibit Eight. But my question was-
Didn't have a fund last year, but this year we do. I think that's the reason we didn't do it, because it had just started last year.
Well, last year, when we approved this, we'd actually started receiving that fund. So, initially, we said on a monthly basis, but it looks like, it looks like the payment, they just switched it up towards non-monthly basis.
They're telling me it's gonna be every December, beginning of December, end of November. So, we paid them in December of last year, one fifty-one-seven-ninety-two-thirty. We have two-hundred thousand budgeted for that fund, which is the corridor preservation fund for this year.
Nope, you can't use it for corridor preservation.
It's not corridor preservation.
That's not the corridor preservation. It's a different fund.
Okay, so that's kind of, that's what it's-
So, this one has to come from that new fund.
The twenty-two-
The twenty-two-seventeen fund.
Twenty-two-seventeen.
Yes, whichever the one that was put into, I don't know what-
Yeah, because we numbered it different.
Yes, yeah. The twenty-two-seventeen is the tax fund, the tax, the sales tax item.
So, I will do some research and come back next commission meeting to verify.
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow?
Yeah.
That's right. We have a meeting tomorrow at three.
So, twenty-two-seventeen is where that one should be coming from, and the twenty-two-nineteen is the other one.
Three.
That seemed to make your day.
Four of us, four of us will be meeting at three.
If you want to go at four, I don't care. It just means we're gonna go at ten o'clock.
I'll come at four if you've got it all decided by the time of the evening.
Hey, if we are done by four, I'm stoked, but it's gonna be a miracle, yeah. Legislative priorities for public meeting, when do you want me to schedule that in the agenda? I see Carrie's here. You'd probably like to know that, too. So, Carrie, the plan was to, sorry for the record, Carrie Gibson is our legislative contractor, and he is in the audience, wanting to set the county's legislative priorities so that when we get to session next year, we, our legislative consultants, have their marching orders. So, when did you want me to put that in the agenda?
How heavy is our next meeting agenda?
It's not light, but it's probably equal to today. Now, our work session's taken, and we have a presentation. Let me, let me just pull it up.
Do we want this, we probably want this to be a work session item? Meeting on the twenty-ninth, and just Commissioners, as a reminder, we changed the November, the first meeting in November to October twenty-ninth, because the first meeting in November's on Election Day. Maybe let's do that for our-
I have that wide open for a work session.
Then let's do that as our work session on the twenty-ninth. Carrie, is that a day you can be available the twenty-ninth? So, four o'clock on October twenty-ninth. Wear your Halloween costume.
Give me twenty-nine.
That would-
Twenty. Did you say twenty?
Um, and-
Sorry, we just missed a comment by Chair. He said we're wearing Halloween costumes on the twenty-ninth?
Well, Carrie is.
Oh, Carrie is.
Just Carrie.
We weren't supposed to bring that up. He was supposed to be the only one that shows up in the Halloween costume.
I was just wondering why we're tonight.
That is his costume. He's wearing a full cap. So, just to give you what I have so far for the agenda next week is, or not next week, in two weeks. So, we do have the BOE final decision. We'll be on the agenda, so we'll be entering into BOE. Our work session is the Utah State Fire Marshal that you requested. The Weed Abatement District would like to be on there as an action item. We've had some back and forth with Mountain Green Cemetery wants to come. I told them to have an ask, that we don't just have notices to have notices. The purchase of the recycling cans and the passing of the new fee schedule, which we talked about tonight. Is there anything that I'm?
What about the transit? Because we've got to sign that transit.
Oh, the UTA?
UTA.
They, that's right. They were supposed to be on this meeting, and they moved. Thank you.
We really don't need them to come present if we want to just-
I think they want to come.
I think they want-
It's to pay for us ski bus stopping down.
I think they want to come.
Which we've done for several years from economic development funds, and really, we've done it to support small basin. It's kind of a partnership deal. It's, what, four thousand dollars a year? Maybe it's five thousand now. Does it come down?
Yeah, it's coming down.
Because they take the cost of the route and they divide it by the number of stops, and they just pay for that.
So, do you want me to just ask them to submit it as an action item by paper with no presentation?
I would like, you know, after talking to them, I would like them to come and just ask us for support.
Okay.
And as an action item.
But not have to present.
But they don't need a big presentation. I mean, to be clear, we're not interested in UTA projects up here right now, other transit projects.
However, may I make a suggestion?
You can make a suggestion, but if it's about UTA having other projects up here.
It's a question. It's not, it's not a project. It's a question. Because in the future, and I'm just thinking of the Olympics, and that was one of the things that have been brought up, is the Olympics and how we need to start planning. And if we plan on anything, including with the I-84 interchange, we're gonna need to have some potentially more buses. And I think they would like to just talk about that.
Okay. My very last thing is I just made a quick list of upcoming events. USAC has not posted yet, but I do know that that venue is pretty small. So, anyone that's intending to go, I'd really like to get your room booked now. So, if I could get a head count of how many rooms you'd like me to book, is that where you are?
I thought you already asked us this.
How many you're actually going, so that I can book the rooms and put them on your name.
I'm gonna be going.
Matt, I don't listen when you talk. Okay, Blaine.
I can see that.
Matt and Blaine.
I'm going.
Jared.
I'm going.
Mike.
I'm planning, I'm going as well.
Did USAC have another seat at their K?
K? What did I, no, Utah State Association of County Commissioners and Councilmen.
Councilmen.
Probably only had two seats.
No, three. That leaves Robert. It was so weird last night when someone called you Bobby. I got, I was like, oh, it's Robert. You're not going? Okay. All right. And are you guys good with me going? Because I was intending to go. Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thank you, thank you.
You did get me, right?
Yep, I got Matt, Blaine, Jared, Mike, Kate, and I, both of the two new Commissioners would like to go.
Okay.
I pointed at Josh. Yes. He's like, please, no. Okay.
All right, moving on to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Anderson.
Just to appreciate the quick response on a few items, the lease market and the traffic study and the pit crossing there, that our county engineer and Brett jumped on that really quick, so appreciate that. And then just Josh with that ordinance that you, we discussed tonight. This email's only two weeks ago that we had an email discussion with one of the private entities about their franchise agreements. Appreciate Josh taking the time to work on that and get that up and running. I think that's all I've got. I was just gonna send you an email, but here, but just on that, set that fire marshal calculations.
Right.
I think that's just a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Be good to just see those.
Yeah, that'll be from, I can send you what they sent to me, but I don't think it calculates to the calculation you're looking for. So, I'll forward what I have, but I'm asking them to do an actual number, square footage-wise.
Excellent. I just have an item just making you aware of, I'll bring this back later. I got a call from a resident that's on Morgan Valley Drive, was looking at plat maps, and there's this really weird triangle-shaped piece of, I don't know, it's a couple hundred square feet of property that is owned by the county in her front yard. It's not road-adjacent, like, it makes no sense. I asked Brenda to look into it. She can't tell me why it's there, but it is. So, anyway, we need to clean it up. So, we'll get some more information on it and bring it back, but just making you aware. I suspect there's probably a few of those.
It's in a really random spot for something like that. I mean, there's no intersection, there, it's really-
It's out of a ton of random spots, where we make it twice.
Well, and the interesting thing is, it was, it was a full triangle, and then the neighboring landowner got it taken care of, and the county deeded that portion back to them. So, now there's a smaller triangle in her property anyway. It's, it's this little triangle here. So, just making you aware.
Property taxes.
Yeah, I guess. Yes. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. Commissioner Fackrell?
Yeah, I've got a few things there. Yesterday was the groundbreaking over the property of East Canyon. There's part of the ribbon. Yeah, just part of the ribbon.
Well, you have a piece of the ribbon?
Yeah, I got part of the ribbon right here. And Mike had one. I don't know what he did with it.
It's in my desk at home.
So, we had that. Yeah.
It's only that long.
I don't think this'll fit.
Not quite.
So, it was a good day up there at, at East Canyon ribbon cutting. I had the chance to talk and share with them the vision of what we had for the property, and there will be some more discussions on the management. They were not aware of some of the visions that were, had been thought of with that property. And there will be some more discussions on the management. They were not aware of some of the visions that were, had been thought of with that property.
What were our visions?
Some of the visions was. Do you really want to know them all?
No.
Okay, all right.
Top three, top three visions.
Recreation, history, um, trail access.
State park and wildlife.
I, I think one of the concerns is that there is some concern that they, that wildlife may try to just make it another WMA. And I think we need to make sure that access stays open. I would really love to see access for, for motor vehicles. Because we just.
At least in part of.
We, we lack that so much.
And that's part of the discussion they would like to have.
Yeah, and Commissioner Fackrell, I don't know if you, you and I were there in that committee session and they specifically said for residents' use and trail and ATV and they included that in their presentation. And that's where we got a third of the money from. So anyway, I, that's how it's been presented. So I definitely agree. We do, we don't want them to.
With, with the eight and a half million that the state provided, I think legislators would be very, in fact, John, Senator Johnson was there and he, he basically says that they would be upset if they did not, if we did not prove to them that we're putting in more than just a WMA because they will not spend money for the WMA from the taxpayer dollars. And so, so that is going forward. Um, and uh, and then at UAC a couple of weeks ago, I forgot to bring you these to you, Mike, and the rest of the county. These are the new flags that they.
State flags?
The state flags. One of them is for the ceremonial flag here and the other one, oh, I don't know which one is which. One's for outside and one's for inside. So.
The frilly one is for inside.
Okay. So we can use them whenever.
So do we need to get another pole?
Might.
We're gonna keep both?
Well, right now they haven't done away with the other one. What's that?
Yeah, do another pole or another.
Yeah, right now there are. So we can use two, so we have to have another pole. Um, and then in some of the planning um meetings, at the planning commission meeting, one customer brought this up, or one resident brought this up, and I don't know where it stands. Back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we were doing the area plans, there was some discussion about develop, transfer development rights. I don't know enough about it, but I don't know if we have an ordinance on that. Okay, and do we want one? Maybe it's a discussion for a later date.
It's an interesting discussion. I think that's a, an hour long discussion, Josh.
Is that a work session?
Okay, all right. So anyway, I just, I just know that there were some areas when I was working in Summit County that an area had done that. And so they did transfer their rights to somewhere else and I don't know what happened to those rights, but I know they are staying what they are. So, a rural area. And that's it for today.
Commissioner McConnell.
So the. Um, just a question. We can talk about this in more detail tomorrow at the budget hearing. The, they sent along that budget request. It was about two hundred and fifty. Has that already been incorporated on the tourism category?
The which one?
From Vista Works.
Oh, yeah, that one we approved it a few weeks ago, but then it's got to be put into the budget here. I think you did it. Kate, yeah, should be there.
It may be in there. I know just Brian asked me the question if whether it had been passed along and I wasn't at all at the other budget.
Oh, yeah, it's in the budget. It was in actually the original, original, original budget that we sent out.
Okay, great.
And actually, they've already got all of that, um. Mm-hmm, the digital ad, or my, I, there's a word for it. They've got it all built out and spent. So the UOT grant is pretty much already completed and we're ready to submit our final report once we get all those invoices.
Great.
And they're doing that report? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And they also asked about the Vista, the actual Vista Works contract, renewed contract. Has he called and talked to you about that?
Well, the contract was for several years, what renewal.
Yeah, they're looking for a signed copy of it.
Oh, they just, okay, absolutely. I can get that to them.
Okay. He said something about an eight percent increase, but they had agreed not to increase it to twenty-five.
And I made sure to take that email and print it out and attach it to our copy of the agreement so that, that was in perpetuity.
Okay, great.
So Brian needs a copy of the executed?
Yeah, he said they had never received the signed copy and I said, I think we've approved it. You just, so, told him I'd ask.
Okay, I actually have a meeting with him tomorrow, so I will get that done, executed, just to. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
Um, I don't think Lieber Human Services, um, in our meeting, they're, they're shutting down. Well, they haven't made the final decisions yet, but they're closing a lot of senior centers. Couple of, I should say, a lot, but a couple of them. Funding is just, which is breaks my heart because there's a lot of people that depend on that kind of stuff, you know? We, I don't, Blaine's trying to figure out exactly what we pay Lieber Human Services a year because apparently they get money from different sources also besides what we just write them checks for. But, um. They're cutting down on meals, on wheels, they're, they're just, they're just not getting any government funding, federal funding anymore as far as what they were getting after COVID. And so it's really cramping their style. They're asking that um everybody, and I don't know why certain cities don't want to participate in that even though they're, they're people. But, um, anyway, I just said I'd come back and see if there, we have anything in any of our funds to help out with some of the other entities so they don't have to do as much as they're doing. Closing as much as they're closing.
I mean, it is interesting because the YCC is experiencing some of the same things. Federal programs are being contracted. State programs are being contracted. Even some of the allocation of state funds last year was just completely odd, you know, by the state agency that was in charge of what was allocated. I don't know, but there's much money has been, has been infused into the economy and some of these spending on the programs seem to be struggling. That's, that's odd to me.
It's, it's frustrating because it's, I feel like a lot of, a lot of our monies are going to, to, I'm, I'm not, I'm not being political or racist or anything here, but it's going outside our own individual citizens of the United States of America.
Special interests and such.
End up getting, it's getting spent on crazy stuff and, and our, our own people are suffering. It's frustrating.
I don't, I don't know how it affected these particular entities. I, I know the health departments, and this is something I remember saying early in COVID, that these health departments are going to get very, very fat with money. And they're going to get used to spending. They're gonna have a really hard time cutting back when that money dries up. I suspect we're seeing that with the health department. I don't know how that affects Lieber Human Services, but I know that they're tied with the health department. One concern I have with infusing, I'm all for supporting the programs that, that support our people. One concern I have is, are they continuing to operate programs that are maybe not needed or not as impactful? And shuffling funds there and then coming back to the local entities and saying, we need more money to run these programs that are impactful to your people. So I think if they could show us what they're doing, I would, I would totally support, you know, those programs that, that help our people. But I hope it's not because they're shifting money to those other programs. And I suspect there's probably at least a small portion of that. I don't know, but.
Well, I do know that they, they're not giving, you know, they're not giving raises. They're not giving colas and stuff like that this year because of all the.
But if you've hired ten extra people, I mean, the health department hired, I don't know, fifty or sixty extra people, Lieber Morgan Health Department did. Maybe it was more, even more than that. It was a tremendous number of people during COVID. I suspect that they're not back down to their pre-COVID numbers, you know, of employees. And if you've got an overabundance of employees because you've started fifteen new programs during a time when you had a budget surplus and now your budget's cut down, I feel like they need to cut some of those programs back before they start cutting back, you know, the programs that have been in place for years. I mean, Meals on Wheels is a program that's been in place for, forever, right? Long as I can remember. So it's frustrating. And I'm not saying that is the case, but it appears to me that that may be partially the case.
Well, the only, I guess the only reason I, I said I'd, I'd look into it is because they haven't, they haven't taken anything away from us. And maybe it's, there's a good reason for that. Maybe we're supplying a lot of money.
We're probably more than paying for the services we're getting. And, and I think that's part of the discussion we probably ought to have with them is, hey, you know, Mountain County's infusing a quarter of a million dollars a year into this and, and the services we're receiving are a fraction of that. I don't know what they are.
There's.
More now that there's a health department.
There's, there's more to it and that's part of what I've been, what I was researching on is there's certain funding mechanisms that come into that aging, or not just the aging, but into the health department that are, the, Weber County is receiving them directly instead of coming to us. And I think that's something.
How does that happen? I don't get that.
I don't know. That's what I've been trying to.
Well, I know some have to be passed through an agency like that.
Yeah, but it's had to have gone through, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that has happened and I think as, as you said, as they get bigger, they're starting to, you know, they got bigger because they had the money. Now they've got to downsize. But the problem is, is we actually, and this is something I brought up with Matt. In every one of our utility bills, every one of our phone bills, if you take a look at it, there is a portion of your bill that is taxed that goes to a municipality or to a entity. Look at that and determine um in that what, um, anyway.
How do you know what municipality it's going to though?
That's what I don't know. I don't know that yet. I have not got a hold of the person that's over that part of the department because of other reasons. And uh, that would depend on you guys if you want me to continue researching. There's, there's the aging. There's actually a grant out there for the aging. We have to be part of a system or part of an agency to do that. But if we create our own, then maybe we can get that funding directly. And so there's, there's things that we can do directly as a county. It's just whether or not we want to do it. And I want to have the facts before I talk.
I do too.
Yeah, so. So when I get that, if I do.
I would certainly say, Matt, if they come and say, hey, we, we want additional funding, I think we need to have the conversation of where is your funding currently going? Where's it coming from? And, and how are our residents being affected by that funding? I think that's a worthwhile conversation. That's it.
Cool. Okay, sounds great. Thank you all for your time.
Does anyone have any dietary restrictions?
No. Question, are you going to also in that, are you going to uh register us as, as a person going?
Yep, I'm doing that right now. That's why I need to know if you have a dietary restriction.
I ha, I usually have sugar-free coconut syrup versus the normal coconut syrup.
Who's doing? Oh, you, oh, for you, Zach?
Yeah.
No bean.
All right. With that. I'm gonna declare this meeting adjourned.
Yeah, fine.
That's good.
Thank you.
You might have, you might have.
Just, I mean.
Glucose.
But in general or because of the, who's asking? Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know where it was coming from. It's like.
For anyone going to USAC, if you have a guest, like if you're bringing your spouse, it's seventy dollars for their banquet meal, FYI.
Yeah, so do you want to receive you for that or how do you do that?
Yeah, that's a, do you want, are you registering one more? Mike, are you bringing your wife? USAC? Yes, and yes. One, two, three.
She didn't ask for kids. Sorry.
You're my plus one girl.
What's that?
I see you and that's where I was gonna ask the question.
Yeah, I emailed to ask. Part of it would be if people would tell me they're going to have a meeting.
I was gonna check. You didn't buy anything at the county fair? Well, it was his granddaughter that made that one. It was my daughter that made that one. It was a pretty quilt. She, it wasn't perfect. It was her first quilt that she did on her own, but.
I have a way to, have a way to do it. We just have to turn speakers off during that part of the meeting, but no one told me that was happening until I started seeing people. So, communication.
Thank you. Chair.
Good. Maybe she'll make one similar next year or something. I don't know.